Welcome, everyone. Jim. Oh, boy. Welcome, everyone. It's lovely to see so many people here today at 8:00 AM on a Saturday morning. This is the first of two work sessions for looking at the proposed budget for the town of Bennington. It is Saturday, January 6th, and we are on the third floor of the, in the multipurpose room for the fire facility. My name is Jeanne Jenkins. I have the pleasure of chairing this board, and I'd like my fellow board members to introduce themselves, starting with Sarah.
Yes, good morning. This is Sarah Perrin.
I'm Gary Corey.
Good morning. I'm Jim Carroll.
Good morning, Tom Haley.
Jean Conner.
Morning, I'm Ed Woods.
Thank you very much. And also with us today, we have our town manager, Stuart Hurd.
Good morning, everyone.
We have Nancy Lively, who takes excellent minutes at every single meeting. And we have Jim Byers, who is, is this live?
Recorded.
Recorded for Cat TV to be shown at a later date.
Later on this afternoon.
Later on this afternoon. All right. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Stu. We are looking, our agenda is to look first at the Bennington Fire Department, then the Police Department, Highway Department, and then in the other pieces of the budget that are not going to be discussed on the, at the second meeting, which is next Saturday. So Stuart, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. And we will open with the Fire Department today. The Fire Department, the fund is actually proposed to be decreased by 2.78%. Some of that has to do with purchases that are going to be made during this fiscal year that would normally have been budgeted in the coming fiscal year. But I'm going to let Chief Santarangelo and Chief Doucette lead the, lead the charge on this one.
Good morning. Jeff Santarangelo and I are here to present on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2025 for retaining two of the Fire Departments. Not, not a lot of asks here from the Bennington Fire Department in fiscal year 2025. I think that in our several meetings that we had with the chief, the deputy chief, and the assistant chief, we were able to put together a very responsible budget for 2025. One of the, I'm going to leave the big part for Chief Santarangelo to answer. Pretty, pretty standard. You've seen the highlights from the town manager on the Fire Department requests, looking to replace five sets of turnout gear for 2025. This is pretty standard to the tune of $20,250. Again, this is, this is a standard purchase that is made yearly, upgrades, things of that nature. Moving on to communications, we are proposing the purchase of mobile radios and pagers. Again, we do replace radios and pagers, a few at a time, and it is absolutely necessary. Mobile radios, any type of portable radio now is expensive, and that line pool was just over $12,000. There are some improvements to be made to the fire facility here up on this floor. In fact, we're looking to install some security equipment, looking to change locks on doors, go into push-button locks. The days of keys just don't work. And we're looking to have push-button access, restricted access, and without a code, people will not be able to enter certain parts of the building. We did, we did see a reduction in this line, 457810, with our proposed security upgrades, and we're pleased about that. Standard payments that have to be made on our rescue pumper truck as well as our ladder truck, consisting of principal payments and interest. The big purchase, the big piece of the budget this year under 03458830 is the proposed purchase of a breathable air filling station, and I'm going to let Chief Santarangelo talk about that. We've had lots of conversations between the four of us on how best to do this, and then conversations with the manager and the finance director on how best to replace the failing equipment that we have here at the fire facility. Chief?
Well, so we're, right now it's over 20 years old, and we can't get parts for it, and we can't find anybody to worry about it. So we're kind of stuck. Anything happens to it, we can't fill our air bottles or our air packs. It's kind of like a half, a, a, a. We also don't have a blast chamber on it, where you put the air packs in this little special box, and it seals it, so when you're filling the air, air bottles, and they explode, they explode inside. Right now, you just basically, from our knees, you just open the valve and watch it. When it gets about right, we close it. Okay, and we'll always, it's going to get us to the room with the, yeah, they'll just drop, so I don't have to. It's just, it's time.
So with that being said, the equipment that's currently in place here was in place when the fire facility was built. There's a lot of safety improvements, as Jeff was talking about, with, with the blast chamber. That's an important piece. If we did lose an air bottle, potentially could be lose the firefighter that was filling that, as well as take down walls and everything else. So again, over the last 20 years, we've seen a lot of, a lot of safety improvements, and just so that you are all aware and people at home are aware, I mean, this is a piece of equipment that's $82,000. But you have to be able to fill air bottles, air pack bottles. You know, they're used at car fires, they're, they're used at calls where there is orders that we don't know what they are, and obviously used at structured fires and things like that. You know, it's, it's, it's just something that has to be maintained. I think that the finance director and the manager have done an excellent job in realizing that there is a local financial institution that is willing to finance this piece of equipment, and it will cost us approximately $10,340 a year for the next several years in order to make that happen. It is a necessary piece of equipment.
Can you, can you just speak to, is there anywhere else to pull that money from? I'm looking at the fire fund revenue, which looks like, is there, is there any place else to pull that money from, or is borrowing the best option?
The only, the only other place that, that we could possibly consider taking that money from is the Fire Department Reserve account. That account basically is designed, however, for the purchase of fire trucks. You know, we, we have the new ladder truck, the, the rescue pumper truck, we look at that, it's a beautiful piece of equipment, but that's almost 10 years old already, and, and, which still very usable, but we're also, there is a truck that's been formed and looking at replacing Engine 934 at this point. So, and as we all know, it takes forever to get a fire truck, we'd be two years out on that, and we thought it would be best not to touch that account, because we do know that this, this new truck is going to be anywhere from $600,000 to $800,000. And, you know, we, we would prefer to go with the finance director's recommendation of financing this through the local institution and doing it that way.
Questions?
Yeah. What do we do in the meantime if you're unable to fill the bottles?
It's still usable right now.
They are?
Well, if it breaks, we're, we're done. We can fill it, pump Engine 35 or 36, it's got a compressor, but once those tanks on that are completed, we have no way to fill it. We use a big compressor to fill the tanks on 36.
It's just a, it's a failing piece of equipment that is, and it's, and it's not safe at this point. But we are still using it because we have to. We've also, we're also working with other fire departments in the area and on occasion help to fill some of their bottles as well. You know, I do consider, and this will get me into trouble, but I do consider the Bennington Fire Department to be the biggest and best in the area, and we, you know, we are working with other, other fire departments, but right now, Jeff's right. I mean, we're, we're filling the smaller bottles off of the bottles on a truck. And if there is a major incident here, that is not going to work. In past, in the past, we've had major fires, put air bottles into the back of the, the hazmat truck, bring them back here, fill them, and put the air pack bottles back on the fire scene. We need this machine.
Right. I guess I was just thinking about timing of that. Is it, like, what's, what's the time, once we order that piece of equipment, to, to when we get it? I think it might be.
Yeah, right, right. The concern is, this is for next, this is for next fiscal year, so that means we've got a half a year, we've got to order it and get it in. Are we, are we okay until then?
I think, you know, I'll, I'll defer to the fire chiefs on that. I mean, three or four months before we get it installed and up and running.
And, and, but we can't do that until, we can't actually receive it until July?
It's just like anything else. I mean, we're, you know, you have to order it, it takes months to get it, to get it built, and then delivered, and then it has to be installed. So, I mean, we're, we're putting it forward now, knowing that if in March the budget is approved, we're going to go ahead and order that equipment. So July 1st, we're going to be able to have that installed.
Good.
Okay. Questions from the public? No? And I think we're, I think that you've got a very tight budget. Your needs seem very real and have us a little anxious for them to happen. So with that, thank you very much, and thank you for working so hard on this piece of the budget.
Just before we end, Ms. Jenkins, Nathan, do you have anything you want to add? Scott? Thank you.
Great. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
I have one question. Fire Department?
Okay. Please come on up.
Fire Department?
Yeah, I just asked that question, and nobody responded.
Fire technology has failed, so.
Okay. So Nancy, if you can come over to the podium, state your name and town of residence and ask your question.
Nancy White, Bennington. Do you have any idea what the other towns are paying, that have paid fire departments for each person, to give us an idea in Bennington of what we're going to be looking at in the future as the year rapidly approaches, when we're going to have to go to a paid department?
So Nancy, go ahead and ask all your questions of us, and then they will respond. All right? So we're going to follow the same format.
So I won't be able to ask a follow-up?
Right now, you're going to just ask your initial question, they can respond, and then if there is any follow-up, and there's no one else that has a question.
Well, my concern is, is we've been very fortunate for 125 years that we've had volunteers, and I don't know how long Brattleboro and Ruttland has already had paid departments. And to not even be discussing or getting the public ready, we're going to need a lot of money when it comes time to pay. Can we have a partially paid department, or would it have to be all paid at one time? So the cost, and I don't even know if you know this, because I tried to ask at the select board meeting, so you'd be ready, but they wouldn't ask, let me ask a question about the budget.
Well, roughly the cost of a paid department the size of ours would be about $10, $8 million. You've got to be a two-man per truck. You've got your shifts, you've got, and all payroll, all vacations, payroll, uniform, everything. So, you know, that's about $8,000, very expensive.
Very expensive.
Paid part-time, I'm not sure. I'll have to work. I know it'll still be expensive, but, I'm not sure I'm that hard. I know it's part on me.
Jean?
Yes. Can you speak to, I know there's a model, and believe me, I don't know a lot about this, but I know there's a model where there's a paid chief, but there's the volunteer, the firefighters are volunteer. Is that accurate?
They do have that, and I don't know how it works out.
Okay. Are you currently discussing a paid department at this point?
No.
Okay, so they're not in discussion about implementing a paid department at this point, Nancy?
So please, Nancy.
You're not allowed to speak. All right. Any other questions? Sam, again, if you come over here. Thank you.
Good morning. Sam Mercino, Bennington, Vermont. I have two questions. One is, I know we purchased a new ladder truck. I still see our old ladder truck in the, in the truck bay. Is that ever going to be sold, so we can get some funding from that? And secondly, I know not in this fiscal year, but the next fiscal year, just to prompt the general public, we've got more apparatuses that are going to be purchased, and those are pumper trucks.
I'll address that.
Okay.
The ladder truck, 100%, the, the old ladder truck is my responsibility to put that up for sale. I have not.
Am I obligated to?
No, it's, it's ultimately my responsibility. I have not done it. We have worked towards that. We have contacted brokers that would be willing to sell that truck for us. I have been working diligently with these gentlemen, trying to figure out how we can get the most money for that truck. Anyone in this room can go on and see that used ladder trucks right now are selling the year that we have for approximately $45,000 to $50,000. We originally had hoped, Chief Santarangelo and I went back and forth one day politely, of course, because he wanted $125,000 for that truck, because that's what he feels it's worth. And so we've, we've struggled. We, we are going to contact Auctions International in addition to a broker here in Vermont. We have taken all the pictures that are required, I have all the paperwork that needs to be completed. So yes, that ladder truck does, does sit in the bay. It is taken out periodically and used so that nothing freezes up on it, and, but that is our responsibility. We've been trying to figure out, okay, if we could just get beyond COVID, maybe it would be worth a little more money. But it doesn't seem to be going that way. That is one of my 2024 priorities. Been working with Michelle Johnson, she will tell you, it is a priority. We just met, and I told these gentlemen that that is a priority for 2024, is to move that ladder truck. If we only received $50,000 for it, then that's what we receive, you know, we are, and I understand, I'll be straight up, I understand, we're, we're paying insurance on that. It's taken up a place at our firehouse. I, I get all of that, but we were trying to get the most money that we could for that truck. And it just, it doesn't look like we're going to gain by holding on to it any longer, so.
The values have been very low, much lower than we had anticipated, and frankly, I've been hopeful that values will go up, because much lower than anticipated.
It is, it is a great question from Sam. Others have asked, and we just, we were hoping to get more money than, than it looks like we're going to get for it.
Thank you. And that was Michelle Johnson speaking up.
Michelle Johnson.
HR Director. All right. Any other questions? Any other questions at all from anyone? All right. Well, this time, I think we are saying, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And then next up will be the Bennington Police Department. We are ready when you are.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
All right. Good morning again. This is usually my favorite time of year. I love to come in front of the board and talk about all the excellent police work that the staff of the Bennington Police Department is doing. And I will just start out before I make this budget presentation and tell all of you that 2022 was a terrible year for the town of Bennington as far as drugs and violence. 2023, the work of the men and women of the Bennington Police Department stands out, and violent crime has decreased significantly, and, and that is a result of the hard work and what we're afforded as far as equipment and the resources that we need to get our jobs done. So thank you to all of you, and thank you to the people that come out and vote in favor of the budget. So with that being said, we have lots to talk about this morning. Unfortunately, it won't just take 22 minutes like it did for the Fire Department, I'm jealous, but joining me here today is Lieutenant Randy. We work hand in hand, and we think that we've put together a very fiscally responsible budget, seeing what, the different things that we have to deal with here in Bennington. So we're going to start out right from the top, under police administration. You do see an increase there in the police administration line. Basically, that is a result of the working agreement with the police union. The officers are, are receiving a 5% pay increase this year, which I firmly believe that they deserve. The town of Bennington in 2023 had over 12,900 calls for service just for the police department, just the police department. We looked at other communities in the areas, Vermont State Police cover everything other than Bennington, Winhall, and Manchester, and they did about 5,600 calls. Manchester Police Department did about 5,500 calls, and Winhall did about 3,300 calls. So when you look at the call volume, this is where it's at, 12,900 and change. So with that being said, under police administration, this year, we did, where we were able, in, in the current fiscal year, we did employ two community resource specialists. They are working out, they are doing things that officers just simply did not have time to do. They are checking parking lots, they're checking buildings, they are out talking with people that are having mental health issues, they are working with United Counseling Service, they're doing a lot of different things. For us, the program is working. So we did add $48,000, which is the cost to have two part-time employees approximately 23 hours a week out on, on the road, assisting officers, directing some traffic, taking statements if need be, and things like that. So that is working, so we can see an increase in the budget of $48,000 as a result of the wanting to keep those community resource specialists in place. Our overtime line was reduced by the town manager, as it is every year, despite my efforts to increase that line. The overtime line this year in fiscal year 2025 is kept at 9%, and we're going to do our best to make that happen. In July, when July 1st rolls around, once we have these two people that will be going to the academy in February, come out of the academy, that'll put us down with a retirement for officers. And we are going to work diligently at finding additional officers to send to the academy in the summer of 2024. So with that being said, under administration, you're also going to see an increase for a crisis clinician. Let's talk about that. I would love to answer your questions on this. We did receive a grant, excuse me, I take that back. We did ask the state for grant funding. United Counseling Service did receive the grant funds as a result of Lieutenant Randy and I's request to have a crisis clinician assigned to the Bennington Police Department. What does that mean? We have a crisis clinician UCS is available, and the hospital is available to us during the day, the hospital is available to us at night, but UCS has on-call workers three nights a week. We have a crisis clinician assigned to the Bennington Police Department, and that person rides with the officers, responds to mental health calls, and helps the officers work through some of the calls involving people in mental health crises. That person is also spending time with the officers, talking to the officers about their lives, their daily lives, and the stresses in their lives, and giving guidance. So it's, it really is a win-win for us. So when did this happen? Well, we had hoped that it would happen July 1st, but it did not in 2023. It took some time to find the right person. In fact, I was, I was away with an iPad and the White Mountains, trying to get up top so that I could get service, so we could interview this person, and, and we really have enjoyed his presence at the Bennington Police Department, but it's only been a short period of time. But if you were to ask me right now, Chief, is this working? Yes, 100%. It's working. We meet with United Counseling Service, we meet with the crisis clinicians, and, and we do believe it's working. So we are asking that that $41,600 remain intact in line, 41560, so that we too will have funding to give to United Counseling Service, so that we can continue on with this crisis worker. The current grant that's in place to have this crisis worker expires June 30th of 2024. One of the agreements that I made with the state of Vermont prior to receiving this funding was that we would do our best to convince the select board to retain the crisis worker. It's one of those things, you know, you get the startup funds, but then you have to maintain the program. It is working. It's an excellent program, and I, and I think that, you know, the, the $41,600 is, is well worth the investment. So before I move on, I would love to answer any questions about that.
Great. Question?
Paul, can you give us, or Chief Doucette, can you give us some examples where this crisis, what's, what is the title of crisis?
Crisis worker.
Crisis worker. Where they've been employed?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, the, the crisis worker will respond to calls where someone is considering harming themselves after hours and during the day. Even the police department usually gets the first call, because someone calls 911, right? So we're fortunate that during the day, you know, there, there is an entire staff at United Counseling Service. At night, not so much. That crisis worker that is on call may be already dealing with someone in the emergency department, or at the Patel House, or at one of the other UCS facilities. So this person, three nights a week, is assigned to our, our office. And what ends up happening is, and you're, you're the question about examples, you know, that's, it's people that are feeling down and out, people that need help and guidance, perhaps they need some type of public assistance. Those are all questions that we have been answering all of these, all of these years, and now it doesn't just come from an officer, it's coming from someone who knows how to deal with crises. And, you know, people that need to be evaluated perhaps on a, a mental health situation, convincing that person to go up to the emergency department to be evaluated, and then the crisis worker responds there as well, meets with that person, they confer with the doctors and the nurses in the emergency department, all things that we have been doing as law enforcement officers, but I, I, you know, it doesn't say, "Chief Doucette, PhD," or "doctor." You know, I, you know, these are things that are much needed if we're going to deal with some of the issues that we're seeing here in Bennington and surrounding communities. Vermont State Police is an example, they also have a crisis worker working out of their office, they can use their crisis worker when our crisis worker is not working. So that's, that's really what it's, what it's for, is to give people guidance, and sometimes when an officer shows up, you know, gun, badge, you know, it's a little bit difficult, where now an officer, when the crisis worker is on duty, can take a step back, the officer takes a step back, and the crisis worker deals with that person. So there's not that authority, you know, and, and it makes, sometimes it's a little more comfortable. But we're still seeing, frequently, we're, we're still seeing some of the people that we deal with on a regular basis would prefer to talk to an officer. So, you know, over time, this, this will change, because we have developed rapport with, with, with some of these people that go into crisis frequently. So, yeah, I think it's a great progress.
I've got one follow-up. With respect to de-escalation, I've seen your, your officers do that marvel, marvelously, you know, they show up to a guy that's screaming and yelling, no lights, no sirens.
And sometimes when an officer shows up, you know, gun, badge, you know, it's a little bit difficult, where now an officer, when the crisis worker is on duty, can take a step back, the officer takes a step back, and the crisis worker deals with that person. So, there's not that authority, you know, and it makes, sometimes it's a little more comfortable. But we're still seeing, frequently, we're still seeing some of the people that we deal with on a regular basis would prefer to talk to an officer. So, you know, over time, this will change, because we have developed reports with, with, with some of these people that go into crisis frequently. So, yeah, I think it's a great process.
I've got one follow-up. With respect to de-escalation, I've seen your, your officers do that marvelously, you know, they show up to a guy that's screaming and yelling, no lights, no sirens, and talk him down. And I wonder if this crisis worker is offering any additional training to the department?
We, it's, it's a reinforcement. We are, we are talking about additional de-escalation training. Part of our mandatory use-of-force training does involve de-escalation. That use-of-force training, not to go down a different path, but that use-of-force training is mandatory every year, and we do talk about de-escalation, and the officers have had mental health training, which includes de-escalation. And again, a big part of use-of-force now is de-escalation. If you're not finding law enforcement, in the past, if someone wanted to hurt themselves, you know, we'd go right in there, and there'd be a wrestling match, we'd bring the person to the hospital, and we're not doing that. We're talking to people now. Have we got hands-on with people? Yes, but we're trying to avoid that now. It's just, it's just a change in the way law enforcement does their business.
Thank you.
Great. Other questions?
I have one.
One question. Is this crisis clinician similar to the, the community resource specialist? And what are the difference, differences between those positions?
So, so the difference is, is the, the, the community resource specialists are doing different things. If, if there's a bad motor vehicle accident or crash, they have the necessary equipment, the traffic vest and the flashlight, they can get out the correct traffic. We're not, we're not doing that with, with our crisis clinician. They're doing some parking enforcement. The community resource specialists are doing some parking enforcement for us, just as another example. And they're also meeting with people that need to be, for example, referred to the soup kitchen down on, down by Vermont Avenue on the corner of River Street, or they need a list of places that they can go, such as St. Francis, the sales, when, when they're open for food, and things like that. So, that's, that's really what our community resource specialists are doing, whereas our crisis workers really deal with people that have mental health issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Jeannie?
I'm assuming, by what you just said, and I thought, I thought that's what I had understood earlier, the, the community resource specialist, there are, there's a lot of things that they can't do. So, they're, they're, they don't carry a weapon, I'm thinking, they're, it's a very, very different job. They're not really even considered police officers. Is that accurate?
So, let's, let's talk about that.
Okay.
So, their, their uniforms are different. They're not wearing a police uniform, they're not wearing a badge, they wear little tags that identify themselves as a Bennington Community Resource Officer. Okay? They're not carrying any type of weapon at all, not even pepper spray or anything like that. We wear gray and black. They wear blue and green. So, we just ordered them on clearance, I said.
We appreciate that.
Sorry. We ordered them, Flower was, was having a sale, and they both wanted jackets so that they looked the same. And over the, over the New Year's, Flower was having a sale, 24% off for 2024, off of the sale price. So, we took advantage of that, and so their jackets are green, so that they will not be identified as a law enforcement officer. So, we've had a, we've had a lot of positive feedback, you know, from the community. I know, I know you're going to say, "Well, why are they writing parking tickets?" Well, they're writing parking tickets because those are things that we just, we just haven't, we just haven't been able to focus on, through the holidays, fire lane violations, handicap violations, which I'm pleased with, because it got through the community very quickly that you should not be parking in a handicap spot if you don't have the proper placard. So, you know, those are little things that they're just picking up, again, responding to calls with officers, standing back until the officer gives the all-clear, they are able to take statements, they are able to sit down with people and give them guidance, both former Bennington Police Officers, retired.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I've got another question. This is totally unrelated, but there have been loud percussive sounds up near my neighborhood. Is there any explanation for it? I mean, it vibrates through the house.
It's happening on occasion?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's, there's a local, there's a local, I don't want to, there's a local, I don't want to call it business, there's a local facility that's having some furnace issues. The parks have been ordered, but when that furnace fires up, we get calls. That's probably what we're referring to.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
But we're working out, they've ordered the parks.
All service budget meeting.
No, but, but it is, I mean, it is concerning, because people, people think that it is gunshots, when it goes bang. And so, we have, we have gotten several calls. In fact, there was an email to all of the staff that came out last night about that, so it's just funny that you asked.
Can I, so the, the community resource specialists, are they on foot? Are they riding with others? Do they have their own vehicle?
They, they are, they are currently using our F-150 Police Services vehicle that is not marked, doesn't have, doesn't have any markers on it, and that's what they are currently using. We are working on maintaining a vehicle really well, and putting them in that, taking all of the markers off of that, and once we get new police vehicles, that, that will be the community resource specialist vehicle, and we would, we would plan to mark that, just with some graphics that say, "Community Resource," "Community Resources" or something. We haven't quite figured that out, but just so that people know that that vehicle is out and about. You know, it goes down, you know, to, to the park and other locations in Bennington where, you know, we've had some homeless people running, and, you know, and they visit. And if, if anybody, it's not a secret, I mean, Larry Cole and Fred Gilbert are two people that anybody in this community can sit and talk with, and they enjoy going out and talking with people, and they're, they're doing a really good job, in my opinion. They go out and, on places that may have high vandalism, and they monitor that area during the timeframe that the event of vandalism is taking place. So, they're out there just watching and observing and providing that with happening.
Excellent.
Willow Park is an example of that. After school, when all the donors are being ripped up there, and marking on the pavement, and bathrooms are being vandalized, they go up there, and if they see something, they have a radio, they call in, and we head up there. So, it's working.
Great. I had another question about the, the part-time crisis clinician, which is fantastic. Are, is there a concern about being able to retain someone that's part-time in a clinician position, or is the expectation they split?
I'm not concerned about that at this point. I think that we, I think that we, we, the town of Bennington, and, as well as the police department, have an excellent working relationship with the United Counseling Service, and one in return is just excellent to work with. And, you know, this is a recommendation from Lorna, and I, I really could not come before all of you today, and, and the taxpayers in Bennington, and say, "Yes, 100%, this program's going to work," because we really just got it started. So, I'm not prepared to ask for us to hire our own clinician. There's a lot of talk about that, and people in the community want to know why the town's just not hiring a clinician. And, I mean, they, they need supervision from, you know, a nurse practitioner, or someone like that, which none of us are. And so, it would, it would have to be contracted through the United Counseling Service. And, but right now, I think it's working, and I think that if we could have another year of this to make sure that it's going to work, I may come back to you in January of 2025 and say, "Hey, listen, we, you know, we're going to double this, and we're going to have this person in there nights." So, that's, that's really where we're at.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions from the board?
I have one question. Chief Duzette, you said the raises were 5%, but the budget shows 8.3% of an increase. Is that because of additional staff?
That? So, so what's, what's happening now, that's later in the presentation, but I'll get there.
Okay.
We have, we have listened to our union personnel, we've had several meetings, and we've already started to make the change to 12-hour shifts. So, it does not work out to 2,080 hours a year with 12-hour shifts, it's a little bit more. Why will we go into 12-hour shifts? Let's just talk about that, because that's part of the presentation today. We're going with 12-hour shifts because it allows the officers to have more time with their families, which improves their overall employee health. Right now, the way the schedule was working, every sixth week, you had a weekend off. Right now, it's every other weekend. We're able to provide more coverage in the town of Bennington with these 12-hour shifts, so it really is a win-win for the town of Bennington, and staff, and employee health. So, there was a slight increase there as well. With that, with that percentage, you know, you're also looking at, again, the, the addition of the community resource specialists at $48,000, and so it's a combination.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the board? All right. Any questions from the public? Yes, please.
Shirley Adams, Bennington. Chief, is there any, you, you mentioned that the crisis clinician was originally funded through a grant. I assume that's UCS grant that came through. Is there any opportunity to, to get another grant to, since this is a new program, and we're still figuring it out?
Okay. Ms. Adams, you can stay right there, because you're going to have another question. So, this, this grant right now is not through UCS. This grant was provided to United Counseling Service at my request, and it actually is coming from the state of Vermont. The state of Vermont funded crisis clinicians for several state disparities throughout the state of Vermont, to include the Shasbury Barracks. So, what we have done is, a second crisis clinician was added to that grant. So, this, our clinician spends three days a week with us, two days a week with the Shasbury State Police, or the, the state police out of the Shasbury Barracks. So, again, it's, it's state funding, funding from the state of Vermont. We, we did agree that we would make the effort to add funding to the police department budget to maintain that crisis worker in fiscal year 2025, when the state agreed to give us and United Counseling Service the grant funding. So, that's why we're asking for this funding to keep this program going.
So, there's a possibility, you're fulfilling your agreement with them by asking for the money, but there's a possibility maybe that if it's not funded, that there would be other grant money through the state? Because, again, crime and violence is going to be a priority, supposedly, with the state again?
I, I mean, I, not being wise, I, I don't have a magic ball. I, I don't know what the state is going to do with, with the crises that we face with violent crime, and drugs, and mental health. We looked at this as a, as a one-time opportunity to see if this program is going to work. Again, it's relatively new, it's currently working, and, and we are asking for a part-time position to be funded through fiscal year 2025, to see if this is really going to have the effect that we, we hope that it has. I, I would, I would not bank, I would not bank on additional funding from the state of Vermont. This was money that was earmarked for the Vermont State Police, and we are using their funds for our position. And they've been, they've been great about, you know, agreeing to it. I mean, I've spoken even to the Colonel of the Vermont State Police just to say, "Thank you," but have been reminded that this was funding that was earmarked for the state police, in a friendly way, because we have a good working relationship, and that we, we need to take the necessary steps to keep this crisis worker in place.
So, I should probably know this, but are you fully staffed at this point? I know we've added a couple officers, but are you, do you still have openings on your regular staff?
We, we do have openings on our regular staff, which we are looking forward to hopefully filling those positions in fiscal year 2025. We, we have done a pretty good job rebuilding the Bennington Police Department, in my opinion, and, but we, we do have some positions that are not filled currently.
How many?
Uh, three.
Three. So, maybe there's some opportunity to use some of that funding, since it'll be some time to fill, to cover this position? Just a thought.
It is, and it is a great thought. But, you know, at, at the same time, if, if we don't budget this money, then we're not, and we have the opportunity to hire the additional officers, and then we pass on that, there's about 80 other police agencies in Vermont that I'm sure would, would take advantage of that person.
About how long does it take you to, to fill a position?
Right now, it's several months of, of, you know, the whole testing and interview process, and the background investigation, polygraph, and then they go off to the police academy. We just had three people graduate from the police academy in December. They're all in the field training officer program currently, but we anticipate putting them out on the road in February. So, to answer your question, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a good six-month process by the time they finish their 17 weeks plus additional training at the academy. So, we, we are really focused on, the next academy class starts in February of 2024. We are really focused on finding potential recruits for the August class, which would put them out in December. So, with that being said, it would be, if, if we didn't keep those officer positions budgeted between the month of July and August, we would find ourselves in a little bit of a pickle, because we'd be short.
But just surely, I'm, I'm just thinking, to your point, the, so if that money was available, then it could potentially be used, but it makes prudent sense to budget for it and just see. If, if everything goes as planned-
Right.
-then the money won't be available, but if it doesn't go as planned, then it would be. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask, just follow up on the Shasbury Barracks? So, when the money, so the person is actually full-time now, right? Three days with us and two days with Shasbury. Is Shasbury also looking to incorporate the, the clinician for the other two days into their budget?
So, so remember, just, just go back to what I, what I originally said. So, the Shasbury Barracks has a full-time clinician. This was in addition to the Shasbury Barracks. This is how we had to do it, so that the person is assigned, the second person who works with us, is assigned to the Shasbury Barracks two days a week, and with us, three days a week.
Yep.
So, essentially, the Shasbury Barracks, his first name is Bill, he's their full-time guy. He comes to Bennington on a regular basis when our guy is, is not available. So, I mean, really, right now, it's, it's working for us, in, in the sense that we have the availability of a full-time clinician, but on the evening shift, we see it three days a week. Does that make sense?
No.
No.
I'm still confused.
No, but, I mean, does that make sense to other people?
Let me restate the question. That, that person in Shasbury is on a grant for two days a week, and that grant goes away. Is the state police out of Shasbury asking for, for funding in their budget for '25?
I, I think, I don't know the answer to that. What I was told was that we needed to make a sincere effort to get that position funded in the town of Bennington.
I think to Jeannie's point, is that the full-time versus part-time, and we're hoping that, that, that position remains full-time, even though it won't be full-time with us?
It is, it is, it is a full-time position, but for us, it's going to remain a part-time position.
Right. But we don't know if Shasbury is picking up the other two days. Okay. Thank you, Ed. Yes, all right. Okay. Thank you. Questions? Any more questions from us, board? Any questions from the public? Yes, please, Nancy. And we're not finished with your presentation. This is just the pause in the middle.
Okay. All right.
Paul, I didn't catch it if you said it. How many officer positions do we still have left to fill? And are those missing officers, are there salaries and benefits in the budget? Do they roll over every year?
We, we, what's, so what's happened is, yes, those, those vacant positions are budgeted for, yes.
And there's three.
And there's three.
And you're- And you're hoping to fill those positions in this next year?
Let me be clear with you. We will see a retirement in July, so technically, we will be looking to hire four. I want to be clear on that so that there's no misunderstanding. So those positions, their salaries and their benefits are budgeted for so that when we do find viable candidates, we are prepared to be able to hire them.
Okay. And I don't know if this would be in the police department budget, but I couldn't find it in the overall budget. What we're paying for training for the CPAR, is that in the police department budget to find out how much we're paying since this was a new group last year that we weren't paying for training for before?
Most of the training right now that CPAR is receiving, where they actually work in the PD, with the PD, is in the police department training budget. Other trainings that they receive is actually in a contingency line item that the select board has in its budget.
Okay. So we, do we know total I'm talking about when they have the day seminars and things?
No, we don't, we don't, we don't have any projected specific line item training for CPAR at this time.
But we don't know what we paid last year?
I could, I'd have to look that up. I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay. Because this is a new group that we weren't paying for training for prior to last year, and I just think we in Bennington should know what that training is costing us.
Jeannie, if I could ask a follow-up question? I just want to confirm that your budget assumes fully staffed on July 1st of 2024 for the fiscal.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Have we exhausted questions on this part of the presentation? All right. Proceed.
So moving on, we're going to go to police training under line 014180410. This is really the only harsh debate people get from me today. And we, Lieutenant Randy and I spent some time looking at our training line. When we made the request of the $18,500 to train members of the Bennington Police Department, which includes sworn and civilian staff, we did ask this year for fiscal year 2025, $18,500. That line, after being reviewed by the manager and the finance director, was reduced to $15,000. I'm going to ask this board to consider at the end of next week to consider replacing that $3,500, bringing this line back up to $18,500. The reason for that, we will be having a promotional process within the Bennington Police Department in the spring of 2024. Those supervisors will be required to go off to different trainings to include leadership training. We will also include internal affairs training, and it's not, none of these classes are free. You know, we pay a significant amount of money for that, and we want our new supervisors to be trained at the highest level they can be. And, you know, I did, this is not coming as a shock to the manager or the finance director because I did let them know, really, that was only, the only line I was concerned with. Cost is a factor, and we, you know, we are offering training to our officers. When I say training is not free, that's not always entirely true. We just had two officers go off to use-of-force training, and in two weeks, they spent, they each spent 65 hours doing use-of-force techniques and things like that, getting beat up pretty hard. That was provided by the federal government and was held at the Vermont Police Academy. So we do take advantage of those trainings. I want to be very clear that when we do find training that is no cost or low cost, that fits the bill for the Bennington Police Department, we do take advantage of that. I am not aware of any free leadership training at this point, and I would respectfully request that you put that $3,500 back in. And that's really it. I mean, we're doing a lot of training. We just did a training with our new CPAR folks and explained to them thoroughly that, you know, we don't, we don't just accomplish the minimum requirements required by the state of Vermont. We make sure that we have people that are interested. Our newest is an interest in crash reconstruction. Some of these courses are $1,500 to $2,000 for one person. So when you say, oh, the police department wants $18,500, I'm going to use $1,500 just to send someone off to crash reconstruction school. So it's really not a huge amount of money in the overall picture. And again, I'm not going to be dead worse. I would just ask that you consider that once you look at the big picture here, and I think it would be a good move to put that money back in there. Any questions on that?
No, we will definitely take that under consideration, and as you know, we've been very, we've been very supportive of the training efforts that you have done.
Hundred percent. Hundred percent. All right. So moving on then.
Actually, just real quick. I think I could see why they thought that might be an area they could make a cut because we budgeted 18,500 for the previous two cycles, and you didn't spend all of it. Is there something different about upcoming, or you just want to make sure those funds are available?
No, I think, as I've said, I think with our promotional process, we're going to have to have funding available to send people off to leadership training. You know, Google it. You know, go to Roger Williams University. It's expensive to have leadership training, but we want our supervisors to be the best that they can be, and they have to have the training that goes along with that. It's not as easy as saying, oh, well, we can't do it to him, but we can't say, oh, Officer Randy, you're a sergeant, and just put the patches on his sleeve. You know, he's got to, he's got to go to training. So that's why we want that back in there. You know, we've had, we've had, that was an assault, is that what you were saying? So, but my point is, is yes, we have budgeted 18,500 in the past. We haven't been able to spend it all because of staffing issues, but now that we're building our staff back up and we need supervisors, well-trained supervisors, I want the money back, please. So, and completely, completely respect the fact that Nets do, and Melissa cut that, but I just wanted to. Anything else?
Anything else from us? No? Anyone in the audience have a question on this? No? Okay.
We're just going to talk very briefly about police buildings. We've been in the old post office now for many years. We've done our best to keep that up. There is a significant cost in this line this year for renovations of the rear parking lot. It has numerous cracks, and it needs to be sealed. So we did get a square footage estimate on what it's going to cost to do that. I would prefer to repair the cracks and seal the parking lot instead of having to resurface that, and we cannot put this off for another year. I think it's something that needs to be done. For those of you that were not on the select board, which is probably most all of you, at the time we built or moved into this facility, we didn't have money to have a blacktop parking lot. It was a dirt parking lot when we first moved in there, and we had to have a fundraiser link to make this happen. And I just think that to avoid having to go through a breakup and a, break up the blacktop and put down more blacktop, we're asking that parking lot be sealed. So that's where that's at, its maintenance, preventative maintenance. Under line 4180830, I just want to talk to you briefly. As you know, we replace two police vehicles every year. The cost on police vehicles has gone up considerably. We do our best to find the least expensive police vehicle that we can. We've had a great relationship with the government. They seem to have cornered the market in New England on police vehicles. We do, we used to be on a two-year replacement cycle. We are on a three-year replacement cycle. That purchase is consistent with the purchases that we have made in the past. So we are asking for the two vehicles, and that remains intact in the budget, and we do think that asking for two additional vehicles, keeping in line with the proper replacement, is the right thing to do.
Got a question?
I do too.
Chief, do we have any of your vehicles? Are they hybrid or strictly gas?
So we did start replacing, we do have some hybrid vehicles, and we have gas vehicles. Ford has raised the prices on hybrid vehicles significantly. I called yesterday, knowing that I was having this meeting today, wanted to see where we were at. When I presented this, or when I, when we built this budget, I had a price for vehicles. I understand, talking to a representative from McGovern Municipal Vehicle Sales, that Ford vehicles, Ford hybrid police vehicles are going to see an increase in 2025 of $8,000. So with that being said, I am not asking for hybrid vehicles. I think that would be, you know, an additional $16,000, although they get a little bit better gas mileage. I can't make that up. That's, that $8,000 per vehicle spread over three years, I've just not seen it. And so we are not asking for hybrid vehicles this year.
Do you see in the pipeline electric vehicles that would be practicable and practical for the police department?
I think at this point in time, the only police agency that I know of that is using electric vehicles in the Northeast is in New York, down in the city. There, they've started a transition to electric vehicles. I haven't even really considered that, and so I'm not prepared to answer that, but I'm not considering that at this point.
Well, the, you know, not to belabor it, but I mean, you don't have to pay for oil changes, no transmissions that are going to go bad. Cheaper in the, as a matter of fact, one, my first year in the legislature, the man sitting next to me bought a Tesla, and I asked him what the range was, and he said about 300 miles per charge. And I said, well, what's a charge cost? And he said $6.20. That's hard to beat.
Yeah, you know, and I understand that, but from a police chief's point of view, and you truly sat down, I'm not really prepared, but I've been thinking about it here for the last couple of minutes, you know, it's all well and good. I mean, you know, now with our gas vehicles, you go to the pump, right? You put the nozzle in, you fill it up, and the car's ready to go. If I have an officer out on a 12-hour shift and they're busy, the car is running, the lights are going, and they bring it back, and they plug it in, and bang, the next shift goes to take off, and we have an eighth of a charge, and I, I don't know. I don't know. I'd really have to think about that and research it and see what's happening in other agencies. I mean, New York City Police Department, great. I mean, they've got this confined area, you know, and I don't know. I'd have to really think about that, you know, before I make any more comments. I would just be concerned, you know, what happens in three years when the batteries are no good and, you know, and we have to spend $6,000 or $7,000 buying a new battery pack. I don't know. I'd have to think about that. And also, the other piece that I hear, and again, I haven't researched this, is electric vehicles, you know, their value declines rapidly as the years go by. So I don't know. Maybe not so much Tesla, but look at the price of Tesla, that, you know, the prices have come down considerably because they were overpriced, and people weren't buying them. So Tesla realizes that, you know, they change the pricing. So I think, I think it's something to look at, and I'm happy to look at it when I have to, but not interested in electric cars right now.
So Chief, could we ask you, though, to do some research on the, on the hybrids and what, what the costs are for gasoline, for, for oil changes and those sorts of things? Because, you know, I think there is a trade-off, and you may be exactly right that we can't, that it doesn't work in our favor, but I think it's, it's worth continuing to look at that as we go forward.
And with all due respect, I just want to make sure that the people at home that are listening, our hybrid vehicles now do see better fuel economy. We're still, we're still changing the oil, we're still doing all of that, and, you know, the electric vehicles is one thing, but hybrids, and quite honestly, you know, as Cam whispers to me a little bit here, you know, when we first switched to hybrids, we had a lot of problems. The vehicles were down sometimes for months at a time. The wires were hanging low. You know, here in Vermont, with the snowpack underneath, the ice was building up, and the wires were sagging. We didn't know what we were going to do. Ford came up with a fix for that, and at one point, I mean, I was, I was so frustrated, I thought, man, just trade us back for gas cars because we can't afford to have our cars down. So, but there's been some improvement. Ford, right now, there is a Ford memo. I can look for that for you if you'd like to see it. Ford is recommending that their, their hybrid utility vehicle not be used for full-time patrol use just because of all the issues that they had. In fact, Ford has even come out and has said, you know, this was not meant for this. So, but, you know, right now, they're working, but it was, it was a very slow start.
All right. I think just continuing to monitor that and give us feedback on it.
I just have a quick follow-up for clarity. I heard you say two vehicles a year and a vehicle lasts three years?
Yes, sir.
That's the way you manage the fleet?
Yes, sir.
Every two years? You're buying, you're buying two every year and you're taking out at year three?
Right. We repurposed them, as I said, you know, we've talked about the community resource specialist taking the car, taking the details off. Believe you me, and this is not to be funny, Ms. Courier, our finance director, stated right on top of that. And if we're not supposed to have something, she lets know. And, you know, most recently, we had a police car go down, and I got to give the credit to RJ Jolly. He recommended Auctions International. The car was not fixable, in my opinion, based on the cost to fix it and the value of the vehicle, and we put it up on Auctions International, and we sold it. It's not rocket. And we sold it, and we actually got pretty good money for that. So hence, that's, you know, if we have vehicles that we're getting rid of, that in the future is going to be the way we dispose them. So we are responsible.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I have one. How many vehicles total do you have?
Well, I'm thinking, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking because with our, you know, with our detectives, I think we have, I think we have 11. I'd have to, I'd have to look at my, we might have 11 or 12 vehicles. I'd have to go back and look.
So two vehicles is like, two vehicles is like 20% of the fleet?
Well, we have, we try to keep five frontline vehicles, and those are the vehicles that the officers are using, you know, on a daily basis. You know, we have, we have detail cars that go out. We have vehicles that are used to do traffic, enforcement, and things like that. So, I mean, if I had the chart in front of me, I could do a vehicle with you, but I don't have that.
But it's about 20%.
Any other questions?
Yeah. So when you, I know you're actually hearing me right now because I'm in the mic, and you don't normally hear me. So when you swap out a vehicle for resale, is it because it's no longer in service, or is it because the year it came out? And what is the average number that you get for it?
So it really depends. You know, when we are, when we are replacing vehicles, you know, they tend to have, some of them have had as high as 150,000 miles on them. You have to remember, it's not, it's not just the mileage, it's the idle time at car crashes or traffic stops and things like that. So we can't always go by mileage. Some of them are very tired when we get rid of them, and we do our best to get as much money as we can. And that's why I brought up the Auctions International piece, because now we have a new way of disposing of our vehicles and getting some money for them. We get calls from taxi companies in Chicago and New York City all the time, you know, but it's easier to let someone else broker that deal than do that.
Any other questions from the board? All right. Any questions from the public? Yes, please.
Jill Fortney, Bennington. What make car do you buy?
Right now, right now, we're buying Fords.
Have you considered like a Honda or a Toyota?
Well, Toyota does not make a police package, and Honda is not making a police package vehicle either. So if you, if you take the time, some time to just jump on the internet and look at police vehicles, you know, you want to buy something with a suspension a suspension, an alternator, uh, the necessary equipment, uh, sometimes the vehicles are driven fast, uh, and, um, and, you know, the, the safety ratings and things like that. So right now Chevy and Chevrolet, uh, Ford and Dodge are, are producing police vehicles. Those are the most common, uh, vehicles out there. And I think that, um, if you, if you take the time to look, um, there's always improvements. For example, Chevy's changing design in, in 2025. Ford is changing the design of our current police interceptors, uh, this upcoming year. You know, some cosmetic, uh, design, but then safety as well.
So you're telling me there's specialized vehicles?
Yes. So, so I'm going to just give you one, one more example. We're, we're kind of excited about this as we look around, and a Schalberg, a Mask, and things like that. The new, the new Ford interceptor vehicles and the new, uh, F-150s are actually coming out with equipment, uh, in them so that you can, uh, turn the car on, uh, set it, and it's going to heat up the inside of the car and kill COVID that might be in the car. So when you stop and you think about that and you say, oh my gosh, the price of vehicles is high enough, but, you know, if once a week, uh, or, I don't know what the recommendation was going to be, but if, if that's the way it is, uh, or we know that we had someone that's COVID positive that we've arrested, we set the car in the parking lot, set that device and turn that on, and it's supposed to kill COVID in the car, thereby making the car safe for the officer to drive after somebody that's COVID positive. So a lot of changes in technology, um, and I think that's part of the, the reason why the price continues to go up. But again, it's, it's just, and they're all fighting right now too. Like the, the, the car manufacturers, they're, um, uh, you know, it's just, they're, they're only going to produce so many vehicles, you gotta get out in front of it, they're all, it's, it's really, um, it's not as easy to buy police vehicles as it used to be. I mean, back in the day, we used to go to Horson's, uh, right here, and we used to keep our vehicles local, but now there's, there's state bidding price, there's, there's prices that cover New England, and, you know, they can't go below a certain price. It's, uh, see, I mentioned COVID, and look what happened. But the bottom line is, is that there, there's a lot more to it. So if you, um, if you take the opportunity to look that up, like, for example, our, um, our detective division, uh, would, uh, would like to have a Subaru, um, and, uh, great gas mileage, very safe vehicle, and, but they're also not driving fast, they're also not having lights run for a long period of time and things like that. So, so we can save money there, um, but, you know, for patrol vehicles, we, we have to buy vehicles that are designed for police use.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Other questions?
Sam Rustino Bennington Vermont, not really a question, just a, uh, an honest statement. Chief, you said, you got this down to a science. Every two years, you know, vehicles have to roll over. You work with, uh, certain companies to update a vehicle, uh, you wish that there would be vehicles that are already updated, updated to your wants and needs, but this is very important equipment that's needed for the town of Bennington and to do your work. You are also first responders and have been training, so, um, you're the first on the scene to stabilize an incident or an accident scene as well. Most people don't know that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Hi, Alberta Harrington. I was looking at the proposed budget, and I see police investigations is, um, reduced. I just was wondering why, given the plethora of drugs and other things in our communities recently?
Well, thank you for asking. Um, we, um, we have been preparing now, it's not that it's, it's, it's financially it's reduced, but the investigations are increased. So let me explain. So we are finding ourselves in a situation now where law enforcement is spread thin throughout the state of Vermont. We most recently, I'm not going to get into the details, we most recently received a memo from the Department of Public Safety, Vermont State Police, uh, telling municipal chiefs and sheriffs, uh, we will still try to help you, but we are very busy. And, um, so for example, you know, we had a couple of homicides in 2022, um, we were able to handle those, but we needed the crime scene team, uh, to come and help us collect evidence. We are working right now, uh, in fiscal year 2024, uh, working towards creating our own, um, evidence team. We've identified people to go off to, uh, evidence collection, uh, training, photography training, and things like that. And we were able to purchase, uh, some equipment, uh, in fiscal year 2024, that's going to help us, uh, with our, uh, crime scene investigations. So because we have that equipment now, we were able to reduce that line this year because we have that equipment. Um, the, uh, the people that we selected to go off to crime scene school, uh, will be going this month and in March. So that is coming out of fiscal year 2024. So based on the training and the equipment that we will be purchasing in 2024, we were able to reduce that in 2025.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great question. Other questions?
I have one follow-up.
Oh, 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 yep. Go ahead.
My, my follow-up to that was, so it sounds like it was, it was, you're, you're saving by, by insourcing, something that you were outsourcing in the, in the past. Paying, paying for external, uh, expertise for investigations.
No, I can't say that because the Vermont State Police have been very good, uh, with us, and we do have the seed available from them. Fortunately, they are stretched very thin, they have their own issues to deal with in areas that they cover, and we've been asked to, um, you know, basically to take care of our own, uh, issues, um, and it's been very polite, very, very good. Again, we have a great word relationship with the state police, um, but there are things that, that we should be doing, uh, on our own, and we have been doing on our own.
So I guess I'm, and that confuses me about how that line item goes down, which is a great thing.
Well, the line item goes down because we purchased the equipment that we need in 2020.
So it's year-over-year down? Okay, I understand now.
It's going to go down in 2025 because I don't need that equipment.
I got it, I got it. Thank you.
Kelly, you have a question?
Hi, Kelly Carroll, um, from Bennington. And I just think that that's what you just said about the, um, one-line item going down is, um, an example of why adding that additional money in for the training is important, because if we can develop our people, it will help save on expenses and also with, um, retention. And I apologize if I missed this, but how many officers do we have? I know we're looking for four in July, but how many do we have? Twenty?
We have 22 currently.
22, okay. So, and double-check all my facts, because I just get some of my stuff from the media, like, um, Channel 3 and Vermont Digger and everything. And I had heard on the news this week that Chief Murad in Burlington had mentioned something about 67 officers and 30,000 calls. So if you do the math, it's about 450 calls per officer per year. And at 22 officers with 13,000 calls, we're up to close to 600 calls per officer. So when you look at that, and I know we're apples and oranges comparing that, um, and you look at the police department budget, I really hope that you find, um, support in that and developing them, because we really ask them to do a lot. And as far as the grant money for the 24-hour crisis, um, I hope that that, uh, funding in the budget gets supported. And, um, the legislature, not to get political, sorry Jim, but the legislature has said that public safety and mental health are priorities this year. So write to them and say, hey, don't forget about us, let's have some of that grant money, and if we can't get it through Vermont State Police, let's see if there's something else that our local legislators can advocate for us to get us that funding. Because with everything that we ask our police department to do, we need to provide them the tools to do that safely, respectfully, equitably, and we need to train and we need to work on developing them. Because in the end, that's going to make Bennington a more inclusive and welcoming community like we strive to be. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Not to throw a wrench in what Kelly just said, but if we're going to do the math, we have to give credit to where credit is due. Lieutenant Randy and I are not out fielding calls unless it gets extremely busy, which that does happen, uh, but we, we should not really be considered in that 22, uh, because we're not out working the road. And I, I think it's important, um, that you, that you understand that our, our call volume compared to the number of staff is just, it's just not, it's just not consistent. When you say that, um, you know, and this is not secret, I, I told the C-Park folks this, and I've told others, you know, it's tough, uh, you know, when you have, when you have people working as a law enforcement officer in Bennington, uh, you know, our, our pay and, and benefits are somewhat consistent, uh, with others, but it's the call volume and the extra work that needs to be done. And, uh, so sure, people leave to, to go where it's a little bit easier, and they get paid time and a half on their birthday, and they only pay 5% for their health insurance, and their dental insurance is free, and, you know, but it's, it's, it's dedication. And I do have a lot of dedicated people, uh, that, that, that work for Lieutenant and I, or that work for the town of Bennington. And, uh, and I've lost, I've lost, uh, some, some good people, um, for sure. And, um, I, I just, I just think that, you know, Kelly brought it up, it was not part of my spiel today. I just think it's important that we, we sit and we consider that $3,500 that's previously discussed so that we can, uh, get our people ready, uh, for the future. Lieutenant Randy and I are going to be here forever, um, and, and I think that, you know, I, I want to get the department ready, um, for the future. You heard what I said. So, you know, I, yeah, well, I think it's, um, you know, I mean, I, we both love what we do, but getting our people in positions that they deserve, and getting our people the training that they deserve, um, and getting this department ready so that we can prepare this town for the future is important. So, um, so again, I, Kelly and I did not have a plan, but I'm glad that she brought that up. And, uh, I, I just wanted, before I can give you the rest of, of, of my piece here, I just want to share with you that when we, when we look at the police department budget, Mr. Corr, you asked, uh, before, uh, you know, part of our police department budget increases also because we, our, our budget shows a, Melissa, if I'm wrong, let me know, our budget shows a human trafficking caseworker, um, in our budget. You guys have to look at your paperwork and look at the backside and see that we're receiving approximately $100,000 from the state, uh, for that caseworker. So yes, it shows in, in the administration line, it shows another position, um, but that is paid for through a grant. We also have a detective that's assigned to the Child Advocacy Center, and his salary is, is listed, uh, in the budget as well. On the backside, there's $60,000 that comes back to the town of Bennington for that position. Okay? So when, when, when people look at the budget, you gotta make sure that you're looking, not you, but people at home who have access online or before you come out and vote for the, the town budget, know that there's money coming in on the backside. And I think it's important that people understand that. When you see the officers out and they're out stopping cars, which that seems to be, as we've talked about, the, one of the bigger complaints in Bennington is people speeding and loud bumpers and this and that, you know, we're also receiving over $100,000 a year right now from the state of Vermont for highway safety efforts. And, you know, the officers go out, they do the detail, uh, Lieutenant Randy, uh, does the, the submission, and, uh, and we get our money back on that. And we get mileage, and we get, you know, uh, they help pay for benefits for the officers and things like that. So it's not, hey, a couple cents going out and making $40 an hour, and the state just gives us $40. We're, we're recouping some of the money that we're paying for benefits. And people need to understand that. We don't just take this money and go out and stop cars as an example, or, uh, grant funding for our human, uh, human, our, our, human trafficking, uh, person. I mean, all of her, um, all of her benefits are reimbursed as well. So when you, when you look at that, you have to kind of keep that in the back of your mind too. Yes, the police department budget goes up, but we're, we also have more resources, uh, now, and, and I think that's important. So, um, I'd like to just talk to you about a couple of things, um, and I know that I, I go on, uh, sometimes a little bit much. Each year I come in front of you and I say, hey, we, we want to add a K-9 handler to our, our department. Every year, Mr. Hurd, Ms. Courier, they'll look at our budget, and, and it's a challenge. And because we want to be responsible to the taxpayers, we want, we understand that the select board has to answer all of those questions. So this is what I'm proposing to you. We did not put another K-9, uh, handler and team, uh, in this year's budget. For the last two years now, I've been trying to figure this out, I've been trying to figure out how we're going to get another dog. They are instrumental to what we do here in Bennington. We had Officer Rosky out with Gracie the other night looking for, uh, someone that's autistic. You know, we've used Manchester's, uh, K-9 team, uh, in Bennington numerous times. We've used Winwall's. Uh, with, with our 12-hour shifts now, we are proposing that we have two K-9 teams, not in the budget. We're going to figure this out, um, and I'm going to figure this out with Melissa and Stu, and, um, you know, we need a second K-9 team, there is no doubt about that. I feel that we need to, we need to find a way to raise $15,000 so that we can get a second K-9 unit. We're going to take one of those vehicles, and we're going to repurpose it, um, and put some equipment in there and get a second K-9 handler. And, you know, we're, we're going to look, uh, most recently, there was a, a small grant that was, that may be available for K-9, uh, but we're, we'd like to seek some private donations, uh, as well, uh, so that we can get this going. We'll also tell you, as sad as this may be, um, you know, Gracie is getting to the point, not Rob, thank goodness, but Gracie is getting to the point, no one knows who Rob is, everybody knows who Gracie is. And, you know, Gracie's been with us for a long time, uh, she's an icon, really. And, you know, Gracie has about two years left to use for. And in order to make that smooth transition with Gracie, um, within the next two years, we're going to have to buy a German Shepherd puppy and get that dog in the car with Rob and Gracie and, and teach that dog, uh, some tricks. The other dog I'm talking about, um, with the $15,000, will be a, it's not going to be a shepherd, it's going to be trained in all the, the same things that Gracie has trained in, um, but labs are a little more, a little more friendly, um, go into the classrooms. I know Usup in Manchester, you take the collar off and he thinks it's time for play. And he sits there with the kids, and they rub his belly, and he has a great time. So with that being said, I'm just making you aware, uh, that I am going to be sitting down with Stu and Melissa and asking Melissa to do whatever she does and create a reserve account, and we're going to be seeking donations to get Stephanie back. Not in the budget, but I want you to know what's going on. The other thing that I've asked you guys for, for years, and it has not happened, is an impound yard. We are the only agency, uh, law enforcement agency in the area that doesn't have its own impound yard. We used to have an impound yard, then the property got sold and we lost our impound yard. At the same time, uh, they, the impound yard, uh, storage facility is, is much needed. We are currently looking at, uh, constructing a 30-by-50, it's 30 feet by 50 feet, building on, uh, town of Bennington property. We need to find a way to pave this, uh, building. Right now, we're, we've been, I've been working with RJ, uh, Public Works, as well as Buildings and Rounds, and I've been seeking quotes, uh, so that we can put up this 30-by-50 building. We do search cars, uh, we, we, right now, we're parking cars behind the police department. A couple of weeks ago, uh, we had a car parked behind the police department, we got a false call, the officer responded to the call, and, uh, windows were broken out of the car, and, uh, what was in the car is now missing. We surmise what was in the car, uh, but that is missing. We cannot continue to do our jobs effectively if we don't have an impound yard with a building where we can safely store vehicles. Again, uh, we, we, we seem to be the busiest agency in this county, yet we don't have a garage, we don't have a fenced area where we can put vehicles. So we have major crashes, 279, we've seen it twice, uh, this year, I'm sorry, in 2023, major crashes, where we have to hold on to vehicles as evidence. Right now, we're storing them on a lot that is not secure, um, and the evidentiary value goes down considerably. We need our, we need our impound block back. So I'm, I'm proposing this to you, because I do plan to work with Melissa and Stu and, uh, and whomever, uh, to, to make this work. If we're going to move the Bennington Police Department forward and be effective, the, these are things that we need. And, uh, I, I have a plan for that. Right now, when we, I spoke with some of the, the towing agencies, and, um, you know, there's impound fees that we could be charging as a police agency or as the town of Bennington, where we could recoup some money for the we could recoup some money for the maintenance of our impound yard and our storage. And so I'm not going to get deep into that until Stu gives me the green light on proceeding, but I want you guys to think about this. I want the taxpayers thinking about this because it needs to happen. Lastly, our animal control officer does an amazing job. We struggle. We have animals living in the police department in our communications room for days, sometimes weeks at a time. The friendly ones are great. We'd like to keep them. The not-so-friendly ones or the smelly ones, not so good. And we know that we have to build a very small building with three runs so that we can maintain animals and keep them in our control. We love Second Chance Animal Shelter. We also, we have a local veterinarian clinic that we work with. They are great as well. And I'm not, I don't want to advertise because that's not fair, but we have some great partners, some great community partners with animal control. We need a place to house animals on a temporary basis. And if Powell can do it, Beddington can definitely do it. I mean, there is air conditioning and climate control, heat, whatever, in Powell. And, you know, we need that here. Having animals live within the confines of the department itself is not good. And I just think that, I want to share this with you, we have been researching small buildings that will go right next to this storage building that we're talking about, 30 by 50. We have officers that want to donate their time and there are tools to make this happen. We have a local business that is willing to donate all of the plywood that is needed to construct this shelter for animals. There is another business that's willing to donate 2x4s and 2x6s to make it happen. And believe it or not, even law enforcement officers have carpenter skills. And we have several officers that have the skills that can build this building. There's two administrators that have the tools, but definitely don't have the skills to do this. My dad buys me tools every year at Christmas time. Some of them are still in the box, like I'm afraid I'm going to lose my fingers with the router. But Lieutenant Randy's laughing, too, because he does like know how to use tools, but he doesn't know how to use them. But we do have officers that know how to use these tools. We are willing to make that happen. I put right in my notes here, there are officers willing to donate their time. We're not coming off patrol to go and use a steel saw and build this building. They want to donate their time, tools, and knowledge to make this happen because they know that there's a need. The Buildings and Rounds folks and the folks over at Public Works, we've already, RJ Jolly has been amazing. We've drawn, he's got this thing, he's drawn it out. We're going to put the posts in before we pour the concrete. We're going to run the electricity. Stu said we had to get an electrician. We want to have a debate, but anyway, because electricians are expensive. And we have Nick Hay now, he's pretty fantastic. I mean, maybe he's just used to running those computer lines, but maybe he can run some electrical wire. We'll see, we'll do the research. But the bottom line is that I would really like all of you and our people in Beddington to think about the needs of the police department so that we can move forward and be successful. Our four-legged friends are just as important as the two-legged people that we deal with. You just saw that the police department, the members itself donated seven, we had, we collected $700 from our employees and we gave a huge donation of supplies to Second Chance Animal Shelter because they're good to us. That's not taxpayer money. That's money that came from all of us. And, you know, this facility would be built, as I said, on already town-owned property where there's already a fence. You would have limited access. Our Public Works people have some very talented individuals on staff that can do the concrete. We're going to save a ton of money, but we just need to go ahead. We need to find the money to make this happen. And it's definitely not in fiscal year 2025 because the verb seems to come up there. So I share that with you in all sincerity because we want to do the best that we can and we want to get things accomplished and we want Beddington to be a safe community. And we just need the resources to make it happen.
That was an amazing pitch. I'm thinking there are probably some questions. Any follow-up from?
I do have a question about that. The donors that you're mentioning, do they want the donations to go to the town in any specific year? Or that's just a request that they're just a donation?
So the donations of supplies to build that building that we're talking about?
Yes, exactly.
Animal control building? They are prepared to do it as early as April of 2024. First of all, we have to get the concrete down, right? So in RJ and his crew, they're not going to be able to do that before April. But all the plywood and things that we need to build the building could potentially be donated. Or the plywood is definitely available. Or the town would simply say, oh, let's not go through all that, let's buy a building. But, you know, we've been getting quotes on what it would cost to build the building versus getting the donations and having, you know, that whole mantra going back, satisfying people through teamwork. When you look at the town staff, the police department, Public Works, we could really make this happen with some volunteer time. And I just think it shows the community that the town employees do care. So I think to answer your question, we're ready now.
Okay. I guess I'm just saying, the donors, do they want, yeah, I know, right? You can hear me now loudly. So I guess I'm just saying, do the donors want that tax deduction any certain year or are they just saying, we're willing?
Not one person has mentioned anything about tax deduction. They just know that it needs to happen. So we've got a couple of things going on. We've got the animal shelter and we've got a K-9 program that we want to build on, right? So we'll just stop eventually. I'll work with Stu and we'll develop some information that can go out to the community and let's see what happens. But we definitely have the staff that wants to help to do this.
Excellent. Yes.
Is there a location that's been identified for the animal control facility?
Yes.
Yes.
The location would be up on Orchard Road where the old Public Works building used to be, that already is already fenced in. The town owns that property and that's the property that we would be using for impound storage and animal control.
Okay. And that's a big piece of, I'm thinking of barking dogs, but that's a great location. That's a great location.
It's a great location. Because there's really, there's really not, I mean, if you close your eyes and envision that, there's no houses. I mean, you know, the Beddington Royal Fire Department is there, not worried about that. You know, the schools across the street, but we would, we've already talked to RJ about building this building so that the runs, the three dogs runs out of the building that are fenced in will be more facing the Beddington Royal Fire Department and not watching the children as they play on the playground. And it's definitely not a full-time cattle. Let's be very clear on that. This is just housing, temporary, whether we, whether we've had it, someone's involved in a motor vehicle crash and they have to go to the hospital and they get transferred to Albany Med and no one can take care of their dog until the family member can get here a day or two later, you know? Or we have to take someone's dogs because they're not properly licensed and things like that. We get them licensed, we get them through the, we need these to happen and we can return those dogs. So this is not a full-time cattle. I don't want you to think that.
Right.
This is temporary housing of dogs that need shelter.
And if I could jump in, we used to contract with a variety of kennel within the community to hold those animals on those temporary bases. But unfortunately, most of them are full. If you saw the paper this morning, Second Chance is maxed out. So even situations we have now, we end up with animals in the police department for a time. And I'm not sure the animals are very happy being there either.
Well, that's not entirely true. We have a lot of biscuits to be offered. But I just want to add to what Stu has offered. You know, where we run into problems is that, you know, if someone's traveling through the area, we don't know if they've had their rabies shots. We don't know, or, I mean, it's happened frequently over the years. We go back through the history of the police department where someone comes with, you know, with three or four dogs in their van and they get sick and they're not around and, you know, what do we do with these animals temporarily? You know, we can house them, we can feed them, we can water them, we can take care of them until we can find proper placements. You know, I mean, I never went to see a busload of 50 dogs like we had once before that must have cost almost $70,000, but we did the right thing and we took care of them. So again, those are just little things that we're looking for to be successful in trying to find funds.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
I have one question about the impound yard. When I think about that, I think about a fenced-in area. But you're talking about a building. What's the purpose of the building?
To hold. Right now, we have speed carts that need inside storage and we try to sneak them into a Public Works building. We have snowmobiles, we have ATVs that need proper storage. So part of that building would be used for that. But the inside storage, if we have a vehicle to hold, if we have a vehicle that needs to be, we need to have to apply for a search warrant, that vehicle needs to be stored inside of a locked facility. If we have vehicles that are involved in a significant crash, the vehicles should be inside the, inside, secure the facility. We tend to have to execute search warrants on the vehicle, not looking for drugs or things like that. But you need to secure a search warrant now to remove the black box out of a vehicle so we can download the data, so we can determine people's speed and things like that. We can't have vehicles that are tampered with. I can't have an officer sit on a car for 12 hours while someone, another officer goes and applies for a search warrant. I don't really want to go too deeply weeds on this, but the judiciary, the judicial people right now, we struggle with some of them. We might wait two or three days for a search warrant and it's frustrating. Those vehicles have to be, moving forward, they have to be inside so they can't be tampered. So that's the reason for the building. We're not, you know, we're not asking for, you know, air conditioning and a big heater and all that other stuff. We have a way to get some water in there, which we need, some electricity, some lights, and a temporary heater will probably be a small propane heater, nothing that's extremely costly. We're not, yeah, the security piece. And we've met with Nick and talked about security cameras so that it can be watched from the police department remotely once it goes into the fenced-in area and into the secure building.
I have one last question.
Sure.
Do either of these initiatives require additional staff or is it coming from the staff that you have now?
No, it's coming from the staff we currently have.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Other questions? No? Any questions from the audience?
Chair, a question please?
No, this is on this specifically. All right. Good. So that was the end of your presentation, yes?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, I think-
That was quite a, that was quite a tour.
We, I think that we put together, I want to share with you that we included our staff. Everyone at the police department had the ability to provide input into this budget as they normally do. We did have some good ideas which are in there. And I think that we'll move forward in 2025, minus the things that we just talked about, I think we're going to be okay.
Great. This is excellent. It was a very excellent presentation and we all have lots of notes, including your wish list. All right. So with that, I'm going to say thank you to you.
You're welcome.
And shall we take a quick 10-minute break?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Let's get back to the work session. Unfortunately, the Highway Department representatives are under the weather and so Stu is going to do their presentation.
Oh, my goodness.
And I think depending on what questions come up, we may see if they can come to the next session because it is hard for Stu to advocate for items that he cut from the budget. So, Stu, I'm going to turn it over to you to discuss the Highway budget.
All right. The budget you're seeing this year is pretty much very, very similar to the budgets you've seen past years. We're looking at a budget that's up just under 5%. RJ did a great job in building this budget to meet the goal of 5% coming in at around 4.48. As Paul has indicated, all wages are set at contracted rates. Currently this year, it's 5% for DPW personnel as well. No additional staff requested here. And I've got to turn my phone off because it's starting to bing. So we're facing pretty much a standard year with the Highway Fund. Project's cost is up slightly and that is the, you'll find those costs in 5140. We're spending about $454,000 estimated this year based on the cost of asphalt. I can tell you that salt costs have stabilized, so you're not going to see much of an increase in the construction and maintenance budgets. It's actually down slightly based on some of the other purchase services savings that we're seeing because we have now purchased road striping or line striping equipment. So we've saved on contracted costs there, although the cost of paint has influenced the budget somewhat. When we look at most of the other budgets, they're relatively stable. We're in the same range when we look at sidewalks. We're up about 5% on the cost of sidewalks, just a slight increase in what we hope to And those projects are outlined in the line item discussion, I believe, that I provided to you. So that it's a pretty standard budget. The borrowing costs, the equipment purchases are all based on the capital plan that we've been following. Those are pretty consistent. And because we use the Highway Equipment Fund that has been established by the state, we're able to borrow those funds at a reasonable rate and pay for them over a seven to eight-year timeframe, thereby making sure that the budget is relatively consistent when it comes to equipment purchases. And then I would answer any questions you might have.
Great. Start us off. Can I ask you, over the years, and I don't even know what year to start this, what is our percent increase of bringing work in-house? It feels like that's been, you know, it's been a cost savings for us. And it seems like every year we bring something else in-house that wasn't in-house before.
It's a great question. If we look at what we have brought in-house, we've actually gone out and purchased a VAC truck, a used vehicle, which allows us to clean not only the municipal storm drain system, but we also use it in the municipal sewer system. That was a contracted cost that is now being handled in-house. We've purchased line striping equipment and our folks have been trained to use it, having our first real experience this year. That saved us in the range of $20,000 annually. The VAC truck is probably $35,000 annually. That is spread over two budgets, both sewer and highway. You're seeing some great savings initially with the hiring of mechanic. And when you look at the, when you look at your budget, in a couple of places, you will see, and this is your budget expenditure that you get on a monthly basis, we're allocating the funds that other departments are paying to the Highway Fund for the use of that individual. And those are being shown both in the operating supplies budgets and in the repair and maintenance budget. So we're, I think we've saved somewhere in the range of, or generated somewhere in the range of $34,000 to date from that particular position. But it's also, he's gone far above and beyond. It turned out to be a great hire. He's taking on a lot of the major equipment pieces that we did not anticipate we would be able to do in-house. So we've been able to reduce the repair and maintenance budget for our equipment slightly this year because we really can't anticipate that he'll be able to handle every major piece of equipment that may end up with a repair. But we're going to track that and we'll see how well we're doing. So if you look for a percentage in a $4 million budget, it's relatively small, but it's cost, nonetheless, that allow us- But it's cost nonetheless that allow us to essentially budget within a reasonable cost of inflation and maintain that budget.
And we also do paving. I mean, there are, I'm just thinking there are other areas.
Yes, we required a used paver as well, but we're going to be using that mostly on small jobs and patching jobs. We're not going to be taking on major paving jobs. That would take too much of our time and effort. So when you look at the project's cost, and we look at a $454,000 light item, those are going to be contracted out and bid out to the few local, well, they're not that local, but the few paving companies that do work in this area of the state. It's actually a vacuum truck. Literally, it's a big truck. It has a big hose on the back of it. And you drop it into a storm drain, and you suck out all of the debris that has formed in the bottom of the storm drain. Every storm drain, when it's built, has a sump that allows the sediment to settle so that it's not running down through the pipes and clogging the pipes. But that material has to be removed periodically. And in the years past, we had to hire somebody to come in and do that. And we had to place one of our vehicles and one of our personnel with them, because they're generally operating out in the public thoroughfare. We're now able to do that. We use our own personnel, but now we're able to do that on a routine, regular basis. It works much better. Our drains are much more able to function more, much more efficiently than we have in the past.
So one of the questions, reasons I'm wondering about that is the sort of, at this point, perennial request for more staff, the two additional laborers.
Yes, yes.
Are we, how are we evaluating, when we get to the point where we have enough in-house work, that we actually need more staff? And then I guess the second part of that is that we share staff among some departments for some projects that require additional people or people with particular skill sets. So I'm just, I want to make sure that we're not, in fact, burning out staff or being less productive than we could be.
It's an, RJ, over the last two years, has asked for two additional staff positions. His principal argument, and I hope he doesn't mind that I'm indicating this, has been that we have a great number of senior staff people. Gives us a great deal of expertise, but it also gives them a great deal of time off. Our union agreements allow for an increase in vacation time off every five-year increment in your employment. So when you top out at 30 years or 25 years, you've got five or six weeks' vacation. And when that time, or when the number of personnel that you have is all in that range, that's a lot of time off. And it becomes hard to manage our projects. We ran into that problem, and it was highlighted on the County Street project early in the spring, where we had a number of people plan vacations in the months of May and June. And we were incredibly short-staffed to try to finish up that project. So that's one of the reasons. We've never gone through the formal evaluation of other situations, such as you're pointing out, Jeannie, as the fact that is bringing all of this stuff in-house actually creating a staff shortage? We've not gone through that particular process yet. It's mostly been about the fact that we don't seem to have the personnel available to us during the construction season when we need them. But as of this point, I don't think we've felt that the justification has been fully explored. And I'm, you know, when you look at two personnel, the cost for two personnel at the current contracted rate is somewhere around $120,000 in wages. And you add another 40% for benefits, that's easily a penny and a half on the highway tax rate. We've not been, at least I've not been willing to take that step.
Along the same lines, I mean, you're saying that a lot of these workers are getting older, or they've been with us for some time. Is there also a concern about having people in the pipeline that have been trained and certified in the things that they're going to need to do when these folks do retire?
There's always that concern. We're finding, much as everybody else is finding in the various agencies throughout the state of Vermont, there are fewer and fewer people looking to take on laborer positions that have appropriate CDL licensing requirements met. In this year's budget, we actually have budgeted additional funds to send people off to CDL schools, because we are now being forced to hire people who are not meeting our minimum requirement, which is a CDLA license, which allows them to take vehicles across state lines, because some of our repairs are done across state lines for our major vehicles. So yes, that is a concern. Have we not been able to fill positions? No. We've been able to fill positions. Have we found that we're going to need to increase training costs? Yes. Because these people have to go off to school. And unfortunately, the only school is in--
Rockingham.
Without the mask?
Rockingham.
Thank you. Rockingham, Vermont, which is across the mountain. So those people are sent, and they stay there throughout the week. And that's a two-week course?
Well, they have a couple options, every Saturday, or they can go out there for a period of time.
Yeah. So yes, it's a good question, Tom. We've not found the shortage of employees wanting to work for us. But we have found that we don't have the same number of personnel coming to us that are fully qualified for what we would hope to be able to hire. But the other, on the other side of that, going to the issue of time off, when young people or people who have not been employed by us come to work for us, young or older, they start at the low rung on time off. And so we have them more available to us throughout the year than perhaps somebody who has 25 to 30 years of service.
Question. A follow-up question is, so with the retirements of the highly skilled staff, the in-house work that they're capable of doing may decline because of the loss of their skills. So that's just something to think about in the future with--
We actually do a lot of in-house training.
Oh, good.
So that when we're bringing new people on, we're doing our best to make sure that they get an opportunity to work on every piece of equipment that we have, so that they are beginning to understand how the equipment operates. And hopefully, they will gain the skills over time, so that when they are needed, they'll be trained and be able to use that equipment.
Yeah. Is it not only equipment, but it's actually just how to do the project?
Well, that's true. But I will give Larry Gates and RJ Jolly a tremendous amount of credit. They know how to do the projects. And so when we send a crew out into the field, they've already developed their safety plan. They've already addressed all of the VOSHA concerns that you get on the project site, so that when they land on the site, everybody knows what their role is, everybody knows what has to be done. And we also have two great working foremen in Walt Sweet and Richard Morgan that can carry those crews through a job out in the field, so that RJ and Larry aren't required to be there with them all the time. But we line our projects up pretty well, and we find that staying in compliance with VOSHA regulations saves us money in the long run.
Yeah, yeah, saw that.
I have a question regarding time off. I'm assuming that our employment agreements don't provide for us to block time that can't be, so construction season, we can't block time so that employees are present?
We could.
We could, but we don't?
We, I would say we've not been very adamant about that practice.
And I'm not saying we should, I'm just saying, is it a consideration?
We have had that conversation from, through our management discussions. And our managers, we get together, we try to get together on a monthly basis. When you look at the police department, they have a great system in place. They know what their minimum staffing levels are, and they allocate time off by seniority. So if people are competing for the Christmas holidays, the most senior person will get the opportunity. The least senior person might not.
Yep.
Depending on what the needs are. We've talked with our public works department about utilizing the same kind of thinking, so that people who know what their vacations are going to be, they sign up at the beginning of the year. And it allows us to thereby determine when somebody comes in at the end of a week and says, hey, I want next week off. Well, no, we're going to drop below minimum staffing levels. We're sorry, you can't do that. But how about--
Right.
We've not gotten there yet, but I think we're, some of the technology improvements that we're getting through Nick and through Melissa will allow us to do that a little bit easier. Sometimes there's a concern, once you start a project like that, that somebody's going to be angry, they're going to be hurt. I didn't get my time off--
Yep.
--when I wanted it.
Yep.
And we don't want to create morale issues in the department by suddenly slamming down and saying, this is the way it's going to be.
Has to be done fairly inequitably.
We will be working into something along those lines over the next, probably, two years.
When you mentioned the County Street project from last spring, that's, we all remember that, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Stu.
Other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. We're talking about the possibility of adding two additional laborers. Can you hire temporary or independent contractors to supplement when it's construction season rather than having--
We have two part-time laborers that we bring on in the summertime. And that's already in the budget, and we've been doing that for years. Their work is mostly focused in the downtown area, basically cleaning, trimming weeds back, keeping the bricks clear, and those kinds of things. This year, unfortunately, we had to pull one of them into the crew because of County Street. But he's been with us for a very long time, and he's got the skills to be able to do that. His real job, he's a teacher, which is great for us, but he's been with us a long time. Yes, we can hire and we can contract out, Gary. We do that with a lot of stuff. But it's hard to hire an individual person as a contractor to work on a job-specific timeframe. You're better off hiring a contracting firm to do--
The work.
--the work itself and pull our people out of the way.
So I'm just wondering if, before next budget season, if there could be some analysis of whether instituting some kind of seniority system for, so that we keep minimum levels of staffing, or something else comes up? Because I am worried that we are getting to a crunch point where we really do need additional staff. And I get there's a cost, there's a high cost associated with that, but there's also a high cost associated with not doing it if we need--
I would hope we would have something in place by this time next year.
I'd like to add to that, though, that if it's with union employees, and we don't have a precedent, does it need to be bargained? Just keep that in mind.
Will do.
Great. Any other questions from the board? On anything?
On this.
But I mean, not on the same topic?
On highway.
Okay, okay. This is just my own little question. I'm down in the weeds. On the construction maintenance, winter maintenance supplies, it's written, it is noted that the covered sand storage has reduced the amount used. That is, just because it's covered, why are we using less sand?
Sand, sand that's left out to the weather, especially in the summer, in the wintertime.
Right, yeah, that I got.
Obviously, we mix our sand and salt a little bit when we're using it.
Oh, it's mixed.
When we're using it on paved surfaces--
Gotcha.
We use only sand on gravelled surfaces. It also has moisture in it in the wintertime. It freezes, it hardens, it makes it more difficult to spread evenly. You get a lot of chunks in the material. So being able to keep it covered--
Thank you.
--makes it much more usable, much more efficient.
I didn't know you meant it was mixed, so gotcha. Any other questions from the board? Oh, questions from the community? Sam? Boy, we got them. Okay, Sam? And then Jill?
Sam, Bennington, Vermont. It seems to be a fair statement that our increases in our budget is the liability of And speaking about that, where's the liability on our sidewalks? I noticed that each year, we're doing work on our sidewalks on a number between 1 and 10, how serious our sidewalks are. Can we not work on one year for our sidewalks to decrease our budget? And secondly, have we forgotten about the Depot Street Bridge? That is in much-needed repair. I don't know, from a number of 1 to 10, how serious in nature that bridge is. That's a town highway bridge, not a state. And thirdly, on our water and sewer, we've had numerous repair work done at Benmont, or Bennington Rescue Squad, in Paper Mill Village, and just recently at Monument Plaza. And also, we've got a working relationship with projects in North Bennington. So those are my three questions.
Sam, it would be penny-wise and pound foolish, as my parents would use to tell me, to defer sidewalk maintenance in any given year. Yes, it would reduce the budget, but it doesn't solve the problems. And we've learned over time that any time you defer maintenance on any of the necessary functions that you provide, it increases the cost in the future, and it makes for greater liability, because those facilities are falling into further disrepair. That's the sidewalk question. And just to follow along in that, when we look at sidewalks, we have a sidewalk inventory that we keep. We look at projects that we have identified, projects that come to us via complaints, where we find that people are tripping or having trouble with the surface of the sidewalk. Sometimes sidewalks are repaired as part of a major project, where drainage or curbing needs to be replaced. We'll do the sidewalks there. And then, of course, we have employees who are out and about in the community and bring projects to us. So we spend, or project to spend, about $200,000 a year on sidewalk repair. And I would not, I would not reduce that. There are those that might argue we should be increasing it, because our sidewalks are critical to pedestrian safety. Second question, anything having to do with water and sewer will be discussed in May or June. Those projects don't relate to the highway fund, and they're not paid out of the highway fund, so they don't impact a particular budget we're talking about now. And I've forgotten the third question.
My third question was on the Depot Street Bridge.
Yes. The Depot Street Bridge is a project that we have been monitoring over the last three years. And it continues to receive a fair rating by the bridge inspectors in the state. And therefore, it continues to be safe. This year, we have projected, and we are asking the board to approve, an increase of $20,000 in our bridge reserve funds, which would bring us up to $100,000 in bridge reserves, recognizing that that project is probably a half-million-dollar project ultimately when it goes forward. We also have a 5% share in the project scheduled for the bridge on Route 9 in front of Miller's Toll that we must cover, and we are cognizant of that particular project, now scheduled to move forward in 2025. move forward in 2025. And we've just been informed this past year of a small bridge on Morgan Street that is near, in the eyes of the engineers that review these for the state, near failure. So we're probably going to have to focus on that particular smaller project in the next fiscal year when we've got a chance to really get into it and see what it's going to cost. And we'll hopefully pull those monies from reserve to do so.
Back to sidewalks. Do you know when we're possibly going to do a project from Branch Street to Kosher Drive? I know there, on the sidewalk map, it was allocated that there's a need for a sidewalk there. I'm just curious if and when that's going to be budgeted for.
Branch Street to Coker Drive.
Not Branch.
Oh, Branch Street. We've, that is not, not been budgeted for. I know that we had a request that came to us last year from an individual who's recently moved into that area, but it is not, it's not on one of the projects that we have identified for need. Our focus is going to be this year on repairing sidewalks on East Main Street area that have fallen into some pretty extreme disrepair. We were pulled away from those particular projects because of what we had to do on County Street last year and we continue to focus on the Benmont Avenue pathway project where we have basically a painted stripe on the paved surface separating vehicular travel from pedestrian travel. We don't believe that's safe. We have, we have a project in mind to build a separated sidewalk facility up through there. That won't come this year, but it's certainly one of the ones that we feel is, is high priority. So the North Branch Street is not in our high priority list.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking of sidewalks, I want to repair, where I had my car on front green bird, the bricks and slab heaved about six inches.
Yes, we have contracted with an individual who, and there is money in the budget again this year, where they take a section of the downtown sidewalk where the brick ribbon is. When that was originally installed, it was installed in a sand base and it does heave, it moves, and we focus on a particular stretch of the downtown every year to try to pull those bricks, replace them.
The adjacent slab though, Mr.?
Well, we'll take a look at it, Jim. We've identified and I talked about it at the last SLAC board meeting, slabs that have been heaved by street trees up on East Main Street up near Mahar's Funeral Home that we'll be replacing this year. We can take a look at that. I mean, an individual slab is something, if, we can do that. We can do that in-house, we can, we can move in, we can take care of that. That's not a major project and something that we have the personnel and the expertise to replace.
Jill?
Is the highway department, oh, sorry, Jill Fortney, Elm Street, Bennington, is the highway department responsible for snow removal from the sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay. Last winter, I spent an hour and a half cleaning my, end of my driveway and the sidewalk snowplow came along and filled it in. Now, I know that there is a sidewalk snow blower and then there's a sidewalk snowplow. The snow blower is really good about when he, and it's usually a man, who approaches a shoveled sidewalk, you know, a house walk and a driveway will, will aim the snow to go onto a lawn or something. The snowplow, the sidewalk plow doesn't do that. It's, and the driver would not look at me. I mean, he went right by and I stood there screaming at the top of my lungs because Elm Street is busy and so the street plows go through a lot too. So is it possible for that snow blower, that sidewalk snow blower, to be used more frequently or to add one to your equipment?
Not, not, not easy to simply add one. These pieces of equipment are much more expensive than you might imagine. We believe, I believe we have three current sidewalk machines that we use. I think one has the blower capability, the other two are plows. We have 40 miles of sidewalk that we're trying to maintain and frankly, it's, it's very difficult for us to get through to many of our neighborhoods within, within what I consider to be a reasonable time, simply because we don't have the manpower or the, or the equipment. We can, we can talk to our, our plowing folks about that particular problem, but it is, it's, it's hard depending on the size of the storm and the amount of snow we're trying to move. Sometimes it's not possible to, to be cognizant of the amount of effort that people are using to try to keep their driveways clean.
I do want to say I've lived in a number of towns, and this is the only town in the only state I've lived that cleans off pedestrian sidewalks, and I fully appreciate that, especially living on Elm Street and being a walker myself. So I just wanted to inquire about the snow blower, that's all.
I appreciate that. And I came, I come from, I'm a Flatlander initially. I grew up in Connecticut. There was an ordinance that required you to keep the sidewalk in front of your home clear or face fines and that is probably used more than, than what we do. I was very surprised at the amount of effort that Bennington puts forward to, to keep sidewalks clear at its own, at its cost and at the cost of the taxpayers. And frankly, in my years in this office, I've advised a number of municipalities in Vermont not to get involved in sidewalk plowing because it's, and it's incredibly expensive and sometimes you're not thanked for what you do, but I appreciate what you said at the end there, that's very nice.
Thank you.
Great. Asher?
Asher Edelson, Elm Street, Bennington. I want to thank you, Stu, for calling me out earlier. I'm one of those folks who wants more money allocated to sidewalk maintenance and sidewalk expansion, which I hope the select board will consider for this next budgetary year as well as future budgetary years. I would like to see Bennington be even more walkable than it already is. I'm very appreciative that we have as many sidewalks as we do, as we have, that we have the plowing, that we have all the things. I think it's wonderful. I want to see it expanded so that way we are the most walkable town in all of Vermont. That way, you know, towns like Shaftesbury and beyond look to us for ways to make our urban centers more walkable, more accessible. That being said, I would like to also see future sidewalk maintenance and expansion, be extra mindful of accessibility for people with disabilities. That's ever-present on my mind as a person with a disability, mine is not physical. So one example that I can think of right now, aside from just having the sidewalks be flat for people with wheelchairs, would be to ensure that all crossways have the bumps for folks who are blind or have visual impairment. I know that there are already some in town, although I, I must confess, I'm rather ignorant on how many of our crossways have those accessibility bumps for those who are blind or have visual impairment. I just would love to see more attention put towards sidewalks. Furthermore, I know that there are grants, one through the state, one through the federal government. I don't recall if the grants are called. I remember speaking about it with Representative Tim Corcoran and he mentioned that there were a couple of grants available for towns to supplement spending costs on sidewalks, which I know are quite expensive compared to how they used to be and I can appreciate the challenge surrounding that. So I just want to see Bennington be as walkable as possible and I appreciate everything that you all do and I hope that more effort, efforts are put toward making Bennington a walkable, accessible place. Thank you.
Thank you, Asher. Can, do you have any numbers on, I'm sure you do, on how many, for the amount of sidewalks that we do now, how, what's the, what's the mileage or the footage on, the yardage on that per, you know, and the cost? How does that fit together?
It really depends. Concrete sidewalk and curb is one cost and I don't have that off the top of my head. As we move into the future and as we move further out from the community, we will continue to advocate for asphalt sidewalks with curb, simply because they are easier to install, easier to maintain, and they remain, if the base is proper, level over time where concrete does tend to heave. And I know that having had discussions with, with at least one individual who uses a wheelchair quite frequently, he would prefer to see more asphalt sidewalks than concrete sidewalks.
So is the asphalt less expensive because we have the equipment and can do it in-house?
No, asphalt, asphalt itself is less expensive than concrete.
Okay. All right.
And it's easier to put down.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, concrete, concrete is a skill. People who work in concrete, and we are very fortunate. We, we have an individual working for us who ran his own concrete company for years. So we have some talent on putting down concrete and we're very good at it, but it is more expensive, just the material itself.
Right. And then the, does asphalt last, what percentage of the amount of time a concrete does?
Well, we, we find that if it's installed properly, asphalt can last easily 15 years in a sidewalk form. Now, you've got to have curbing and it's got to be appropriately installed. Obviously, concrete can last a lifetime if it's properly installed. So there is, there is a life expectancy that is much shorter on asphalt, but given how easy it is to install, how easy it is to repair, it may in the long run be, be a much more efficient, cost-efficient form to, to do what Asher is asking for.
Well, I'm just wondering, I mean, I think we're all, we're all in favor of sidewalks. It would be nice to know if we wanted to increase, if we said we wanted to increase the amount of sidewalk work that we do by 20% or reduce it by 20%, what, what does that mean if it's a concrete sidewalk versus an asphalt? I mean, just so that we have some ballpark numbers. I think we have no idea what that 224,000, you know, really means.
I'll get that for you. I don't think I have it here, but we'll, we'll get it.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
I just have a question about, I don't, I don't know what they're called, but Asher was talking about them, those pads that have the bumps when you're getting ready to cross the street. I'm assuming that's an ADA requirement.
Yes, and I would, I'm sorry, I didn't address that comment that Asher made. I would, I would be very surprised if, if we had ADA access that was not in conformance.
Okay.
Now, I know that when, when one of the projects on West Main Street, which is a Class 1 town highway, the projects are done by the state for paving. When they first went down through, they used a metal grate laid into the concrete as a, as a means of meeting that ADA requirement. Those grates unfortunately didn't last. They became detached, they, they bent, our snowplows would catch them. So we're, we use a print to do it now, but if, if there are some out there, I'd be very, very surprised. We're, we're pretty good about getting those things done.
Yeah, and maybe they've improved over the years, but I remember when they first started appearing, they were often, I'm sure it was snowplows, a big chunk would get broken off and I think the technology has gotten better.
Well, those were, those, those were generally the metal grates that were
Oh, they
Yeah.
They're plastic ones.
Yeah, they were plastic.
I'd forgotten that, Dan, thank you.
Yeah, anyway, thank you.
Comated dolls they call them.
What are they called?
Comated dolls.
Oh, well, thank you for that. I'll use that. Going in foreign words.
Just go, go back to your question, Jeannie. Sidewalks are $170 a cubic yard. So if you're laying down a five-foot-wide sidewalk, four-inch thickness, I'm not sure how many cubic yards that is, I can't do the math in my head, perhaps I used to be able to, but that's 170 bucks per cubic yard.
Can we have cubic yards?
Pardon me?
One hundred and two projects, sidewalks, cubic yards. And I just want to note that the projects can be included for sidewalks.
Melissa, I hate to do this to you, but can you come up and say that in the microphone?
She hates it too.
Thank you, Melissa. She was my backup, but she didn't want to come forward.
With her calculator out.
Melissa Courier, Finance Director. RJ does have sidewalks, a couple of projects in mind, sidewalks, and it's about 1,100 cubic yards. And, but I want to note that the amount that's in this budget also has money set aside for Hunt Street, but we, as requested by RJ, it's actually less than what we would need for all of that. So to be considering reducing the amount for the sidewalks would be cutting something that he's already dramatically cut that we may not be able to cover.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
I just want to jump in on that. We did a study when I was first on the board about sidewalks and the difference between asphalt and concrete and Jim and Sarah and I did a deep dive into that and there is an ord, I'm not sure if it's an ordinance, but there is a memorandum of where concrete sidewalks should be and where asphalt should be used. That's on the book somewhere.
Yes.
Policy.
And we are following that policy.
Okay, that's good to know. Other questions? On, yes. Cindy?
Cindy Crowdeheim, Bennington. I have a question about is flooding involved with highway? That would be my entry question.
I'm sorry?
Flooding.
Flooding?
River control.
It is not generally considered, I mean, also, we use our highway crews to do much of the work. It is not, it is not budgeted for as part of this particular budget. We do have a small budget for flood control, which is mostly used for engineering costs. After Tropical Storm Irene, we developed a river management plan for the Roaring Branch that we are following. That does not cover all of the streams that may be impacted.
That's the one I'm concerned about.
Roaring Branch? Yes, we have a river management plan there. This year, we're adding $10,000 to the general fund budget to bring our engineers back in to take a look at some of the work along the levee. And if you get up just east of the Branch Street Bridge, there's a concrete levee that was installed by the Corps of Engineers, God knows how long ago, long, almost long before I became here and I've been here a long time. That is starting to get undermined and so we've got to take a look at that and see what kind of repairs that's going to require. So we're at least in the engineering phase there. Otherwise, the, the work we did in the Roaring Branch and the plan that was developed has actually functioned incredibly well over the last several major rainstorms. We, I think, have been very, very fortunate that we have not seen the potentials for flooding that existed prior to Tropical Storm Irene.
My, my concern, Stu, is that one school of thought was that you needed to remove vegetation. The other school of thought was that the vegetation holds the The other school of thought was that the vegetation holds the water or whatever. So which plan are we following? I go by there probably on an average of 10 times a week, and the Park Street Bridge. And my concern is, which school are we following and why that school is versus the other one?
Dan's jumped in, so I'm going to let him go all the way.
With regard to the branch, the management plan that we have approved by the State of Vermont, developed by River Scientist Roy Schiff, who works with us every year to evaluate maintenance issues. That plan includes measuring sediment at all seven of the bridges on, on the Roaring Branch. And there are triggers that if we reach a certain height, we are allowed to apply to the state, and they have agreed to allow us, as long as we supply them sufficient information, to remove sediment to make sure that those bridges remain safe. That is the only sediment removal that the state will allow. It's also the only area where we can keep vegetation clear. It's kind of a compromise between that, keeping it clear, and also allowing vegetation to slow down the flow of the river. We have seen it be, as Stuart said, there's no wood to knock on here, but remarkably effective. In fact, the branch, in the last storm we had, functioned really, really well, and it was the South Stream that we really had concerns about and showed some signs of causing, of being near to causing significant property damage. So we will continue to do that. We will continue to monitor sediment at those bridges. If you look, there's, there's bars that we've actually painted on the, on the abutments that when they reach a certain level, they're considered a point where we can start to develop a plan to remove that sediment. We've already done that once at the Park Street Bridge, and I understand that sediment levels are staying pretty, pretty, are within the norm. We may have to look at some sediment removal at the Brooklyn Bridge soon, and we're going to be looking at that this year.
Okay, thank you. So I'm not going to watch the vegetation anymore? It's all about sediment?
Sediment's the big deal, and the problem with the branch is, it's a, it's a fluvial fan, which means it's actually higher than its surrounding land, so if the water gets out, it causes significant, more damage than if it was just an inundation-type situation. So we have to keep that sediment out so that the river stays in its banks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Can I just ask a question about the, one of the things that was cut was an increase for flood control river study, and it says instead, complete this year if funds are available? Is that, are we in the works for complete?
We, we, we put $10,000 in to do the engineering, and...
We took out seven.
Took out some.
We took out 7,000 of the 10. It's some...
Well, that's because we have, we have 7,000 currently in the budget. We're going to do that, that analysis in this fiscal year.
Right, so I've already contacted Roy, expecting a contract. We hope to get that, well, I've asked him to, and he's agreed to get that study done by June.
Okay, so we're just ahead of schedule?
Yes.
On that? Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, let's see, we're scanning, okay. Sam? And then Nancy.
Sam Rochino, Bennington, Vermont. I didn't know we were going to be talking about the Roaring Branch, but since we're on the subject, I know there's certification on the branch. When was the last time we were in that river to do work? And secondly, how certified are we with that Roaring Branch? I notice, as most of us have seen, at the Brooklyn Bridge, there's numerous cracks in that, in that wall area with the vegetation. And there again, it's whether keep the vegetation, remove it, clean it out, that river has to be addressed, and how much are we going to get in there and do it?
We kind of just finished discussing that.
We just did that.
Yes, we have money to, to study that particular area around the North Branch Street Bridge, and we are monitoring the sediment under all of the bridges along that stretch of the Roaring Branch on an annual basis to determine when we might move. Our plan is certified, so our plan is in compliance with state practices.
And I just want to clarify, because I know this is confusion, so we do have an approved sediment management plan. The levee itself, it's a Corps of Engineers levee that was installed for Stuart.
Yes, BS.
And that, that is, we get that inspected every year by the Corps. And what Roy is going to do, Roy Schiff is going to do for us with regard to this funding, we're going to take advantage of this before June, is take a look at that entire levee system and give us a list of what really needs to be done to maintain that from a safety standpoint. It is no longer certified. We made that determination with Roy's help several years ago because the certification was not necessary, as it didn't give us any additional benefits from the flood insurance program. Because the state or the feds don't recognize the fluvial or the erosion hazard, they only recognize an inundation hazard, and since the land was high enough, we didn't need to certify the levee to get our flood insurance protection. Long story, I just wanted to clarify that there's difference between having an approved management plan versus a certified levee. And what's important about that levee is to make sure that it remains safe, not that we get a certification, because a certification is not, is not what's important, is that it be safe for our citizens. That's what we're working on.
Great, thank you, Dan. Nancy.
I know we've been putting away $100,000 a year for a while now towards the bridge reserve, and you said 5% for the bridge by Miller's tolls. Do you have any idea roughly what that's going to be and how much we have in the reserve right now?
I don't have the numbers. Melissa may be able to pull up how much we have in our bridge reserve right now. I don't believe we have that here with us today. Yeah. Yeah, a couple hundred thousand is the range. The Miller's Toll Bridge project, our 5% in that particular project is paid over time. So as the state spends money on the project, they send us a monthly bill of five, for 5% of that. We've not spent a great deal of money on that, on that particular project at this time. The state has now authorized the power utilities to relocate the power line facilities that are near the bridge, and that is supposed to be taking place, I think, this next fiscal year in preparation for the project itself. I think the project, I'm going back now in my mind, it was, it was in excess of $1 million to do that bridge. 5% of that, $50,000, and I'm guessing, because my decimal points don't work as well as they used to. But yes, we have, we will have the monies available to us by the time that bridge project goes forward. The question is, does the bridge on Morgan Street eat into our reserves dramatically? We don't know yet. We just found out that it did not meet the state's engineer's standards. And how long can we go, knowing that Depot Street is problematic? And when does that lose its, its fair rating? So it's, we can't answer those questions specifically with date and time and dollars, but we know that the Depot Street Bridge will be a very expensive project once we go forward.
And had they talked, is there a bridge on Anthony Road? Didn't they talk about that a while ago?
There's, yeah, well, it's, it is a bridge, yes. It crosses over a stream, but that is a project that I believe we have undertaken with our own crews and staff, and we stabilized that area to the extent that it is not being considered in this particular budget year.
Okay, on to highway. For Benmont, that project was talked about and set up years ago. They planned for a bike path on Benmont Street because the state wouldn't let us use the trail out here. Now that the bike path is here, does that mean it will be taken off of Benmont?
No. The Benmont project is, is, is in a continuing phase. We'll be creating a, what we call a snowshell or a grass strip between the sidewalk, what would become the sidewalk and the vehicular traveled area, simply because that's the safest way to move people along Benmont Avenue. Regardless of the fact that we have the rail trail available to us now, there are people who live and work and walk on Benmont Avenue, and right now, the pedestrian access there is essentially part of the highway, and it's simply separated by a painted line. That's not considered a safe practice.
Okay, then explain, please, what's going to happen on County Street? Because I've been trying to find out for five years. Once you cross over Depot Street, there's one sidewalk to the high school and the Brooklyn Bridge. And when I heard last year, oh, now the bike path connects to the high school. So are we going to advocate for people, pedestrians, to have to deal with people riding their bicycles on the same sidewalk?
If we're, if we're, if we're constructing pathways that are accessible by both vehic, by bicycles and pedestrians, those must be at least eight feet wide. They're most likely asphalt because of the bicycle travel, and that's determined to be a safe width for the combined traffic, bicycles and pedestrians. We would, it is not legal within, certainly within the downtown, to ride your bicycle on the sidewalk. Bicycles are supposed to obey the rules of the road, so when you see a bicyclist riding on the sidewalk, they're actually violating the law.
Unless it's a child under 11.
Thank you, Dan. Unless it's a child under 11.
So that, what runs up by Hawkins House, that is not for bicycles? That's for walkers?
Actually, that, that portion of County Street was actually designed and built to accommodate bicycles as well, as, because it connects to the rail trail there.
Well, I think we need to have a public discussion if, if the plan is to do that up County Street and put pedestrians at risk to have them on the same sidewalk with bicycles, because I know the pathway I originally saw ran on the other side of the street, which would have gone up by the football field. I think we need to have an honest discussion about where these pathways are going to go. And I just had somebody ask me the other day, why is their bike path still stamped on Dewey Street and Stark Street, and will people get tickets if they park there in good weather?
Because that's considered a bike lane and, and was installed as a bike lane per order of the Select Board when, when that road was redeveloped.
We get a sign policy. There was never a public discussion. I had people in the neighborhood tell me five years ago, nobody ever contacted them.
It was done at a public meeting, Nancy.
It was at the time the Stark, the Stark Street playground was put in, we put in the bike lane there, and it was at a public meeting.
Several times.
Okay. And are there any bike paths being planned for what you're talking about for sidewalks or pathways? North Branch or Main Street? Gage Street?
No. The only, the only work that is contemplated in the budget this year is the intersection at Hunt Street and Benmont Avenue. We hope to bring that in at a right angle to Benmont Avenue and as part of the pathway that will connect then down to the footbridge across the Willumsack River.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Great. Other questions? Sam?
Since we're talking, Sam Rochino, Bennington, Vermont, since we're talking about pedestrian paths, I believe that the Select Board members need to devise up an ordinance and signage that at such a season, these bike paths are either, don't have people walk on them for liability, because obviously, we're not going to plow these bike paths. So right now, there's no signage. God forbid if somebody falls and injures themselves on a bike trail with about six inches of snow or a foot of snow, the town is liable.
Any other questions? Select Board, anything? Public, anything else on highway? No? All right. So shall we move on to any other general questions on any part of the budget, I guess, other than agency in the budget that we'd like to, like to question?
Or we could just...
No. Well, or, let's not. I'm just, we have Nick here. I'm just wondering if you can just talk about...
Nick.
Yeah, or, I mean, you don't need to get up, I'm just saying because you're here. Just on, in terms of the history of cut, budget cuts, which is always an interesting document.
Yes.
Just wondering about the, what, what are we planning to do with the IT reserves, and what are the impacts of reducing the IT reserve by $5,000? And I don't know if Nick would answer, or...
I mean, I think in general, we've created, we've created a reserve that has been moved out of the accounting department.
We haven't.
Okay, yeah.
We're creating...
We haven't reduced the IT reserves. We've moved them from, we've left 5,000 in the accounting department and moved the rest of it and actually increased it into the IT department. The plan for the 5,000 that is remaining in the accounting department is related to, now what we're talking about with the highway, is a time and attendance system, which would help alleviate some of those issues we have with scheduling coverage. But the rest of it has been moved to IT to help fund all of the changes that we will be bringing, more advanced technology to it now.
Okay, all right, so the change, the $5,000 change is just, is just not moving over?
Correct.
Okay.
There's no reductions.
All right, all right, all right. And then, you know, I don't know if others are interested in knowing what we might do with those reserves? I mean, what we have in, what we have planned for next year for these?
Well, in most general terms, there are going to be big costs related to new service providers, and there just is a lot of new IT in general in the, the, the...
Yeah, well, I'm looking at their purchase services, there are, yeah, just wondering...
Would you question what the reserves are going to be used for?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so the IT reserves are primarily to prepare for computer equipment replacement costs.
Okay.
So right now, or how it has been done previously, is each department would budget a flat amount when their computers reach a certain age. The age of the town's computer inventory was, some were significantly passed when it was safe to keep them. So we have, we have reduced that, but in order to avoid any single budget year having a substantial increase in cost to replace computers, the reserve is set up so that we can replace them as needed.
Great. Do we, are we going to do a, you know, replace X percent every three to five years sort of thing with computers, too?
That's part of the goal, is to potentially move to a lease model. So a rolling lease model would replace the computers every so many years and keep our annual spend flat. How we've done it up to this point is that, some departments replace their computers, like the police department, because those computers are on 24 hours a day, seven days a week, they get, they have a three-year replacement term. Some of the other computers in town, in the town network were as they stopped functioning. So as we move forward, it will be a more routine replacement cycle, and we've done a lot of work this year to change the average age of our computers from seven years to three.
Great, okay, that's really helpful. Thank you. Yep.
Just so people know, this is Nick Cave, the IT Director.
Oh, sorry.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Nick while we have him up here? No?
Okay.
Okay, other Select Board questions? Thank you, Nick. I think you're off the hook. Thank you.
I have a question for Melissa. The $5,000 that's in reserve that you said is earmarked for time and attendance, if it's in reserve, does that mean that that project is not yet launched?
I apologize, I want to clarify, $5,000 that is remaining in the accounting department is for what I was describing. I actually don't think it's... I actually don't think it's in the transfer reserve, it's just a budgeted line item. The rest, it was an additional $10,000, so it was moved to the IT budget plus an increase by five. That's the combination of what Nick was describing, as well as just general technology upgrades.
Okay.
I ask you that because I know this board is very interested in the time and attendance and employee portal type future.
No, that's definitely high on the list. I will admit that part of the delay was waiting for Nick to be here and to get through some of the firefighting that he's done since he's been here. That is something that I need to focus on and start working towards with them.
What do you think your timeframe is on, I'm going to use the word implementation, I know that's a, but when will it be done?
I don't have a timeframe. I would love that we would be starting it, implementing it by the end of Y '24. Would be my hope. A big issue that we ran into last time, not only was the difficulty of carving out the time for Michelle and I to work on that, but it's also starting it at a time that works for the departments, because we have, it's going to be affecting everybody, every single department. And there's busy times for different departments, you know, during the summer is difficult for it.
Would you consider a phase-in schedule?
Yes.
So that you start where it makes sense and then move additional departments in?
Yes, and so I think that's where we came up to, was, you know, putting it in, but starting it small with these, making sure we understand it's meant to different groups during the time period that's best for them. But ranging that is difficult, but we're, we're on.
Good. We're supportive of that very much.
Other questions from the Select Board? No? About public? Any other questions? Yes.
Shirley Adams Bennington. One of the areas that affect all the budgets and where there's been significant increase is benefits, particularly healthcare benefits. And I was wondering if there's any information to share about opportunities for savings there? If there's any opportunities for exploring greater employee contributions, changes in benefits, anything along that line? Again, it may be not a short-term fix, but even longer term, because I know a lot of this is bound up in contracts as well.
And that is, that is the guiding factor for us. Both, we have two unions that operate within, that we negotiate with. One is the police department, the other is our public works department. The benefits there, currently, the employees pay 14, or is it 16% of the healthcare costs? And we find that that is, on average, for those communities that don't pay the full boat, about where they are. There are some that are as high as 20% for employment payments. But many of our competitors are paying the full boat on healthcare costs. When we look at the town of Manchester and some of the other towns that we compete with for, certainly for police officers, they're all paying 100% of their benefits cost. So we're, we think we've gone a long way towards that. But if we inch up any greater than that for employee participation, we've got to negotiate those agreements. And we have, I think, two, at least two years remaining on the shortest agreement, three on our longer agreement. So we've got two or three years to go before we can really hit the negotiating table with that. We would look for guidance from the Select Board and from the community when we get there. Our other costs are, we use Blue Cross Blue Shield. We are in the state's pool. Because we have less than 100 employees, we are essentially, we get to select from a number of employee plans, ranging from what they call platinum to bronze, I think it is, or whatever. We are in one of the gold level plans. So we're not at the highest end. All of them are high deductible plans. The town does self-insure the deductible over above the first $500. So, and for our employees, it's a very good plan. That would be a place we might look in the future to change by increasing the amount out of pocket for the employees, first dollar coverage. But right now, that too is governed by our current union agreements, and we'll see where that goes. If at some point, Bennington does cross that magic threshold into more than 100 employees, that opens up a number of doors for us as far as negotiating plans that would be plan-specific to your, to your corporation. We're not there yet. We're at 91 full-time employees. So we're getting close, but it's hard to argue that we should add nine positions just to give us a little bit better negotiating tool on healthcare. But that's, that's where we are right now.
Thank you. Other questions? Kate, Jill, and then Nancy.
And looking over the budget, I just wanted to ask, what does CERC LA stand for?
I couldn't even tell you that. And I was, I was the one that created that particular budget. There's no money in that budget any longer.
It's super fund.
It was a budget that was created when we were operating the Houghton Lane landfill and going through the determination that it was, in fact, a superfund site. And the town had been identified as a potentially responsible party, one of 38 in that particular process. And the funds that we were budgeting in the CERC LA line item were for maintenance of the existing cap.
Maintenance of the what?
The cap.
Okay.
When we finished the project, we capped the landfill with an impermeable cap. The other 37 PRPs paid for the construction of the cap. The town agreed as its share to pay for the continuing maintenance of the cap. Obviously, the companies that paid their share wanted to get in and out. We're in for the long haul, we own the property. So that's where those costs were carried. Now we're down to simply maintenance, basically mowing the cap once annually. And there's a monitoring well on the site that we have to watch to make sure that it, it's measuring water that is moving underneath the landfill. When that reaches a certain level, we pump it out. And because it's got PCBs in it, it has to be treated as an environmental waste. And we carry a reserve for the well monitoring. And every three years or so, we have to pump that out and haul it away. But all of those costs have now been moved into solid waste management, which is basically the transfer station at the landfill.
I was just curious about the acronym. I just couldn't figure it out.
There was a time I could tell you.
Okay, thank you.
Nancy?
I was pretty shocked last night when I was on the North Adams Y website, looking at what they charge for memberships. And the two people running the North Adams Y are the same two people we're paying to run our town rec center?
Are you talking about Taylor and Taylor?
Taylor and Taylor.
That's correct.
And there's a third person that we're paying in Bennington, and that person is also listed for North Adams? This is a huge conflict of interest. This isn't false information. Anybody can go to the website and read it.
No, 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 no. Just hold on. She's saying, she's confusing being in the same organization. They're not running the Pittsfield Y.
Not Pittsfield, North Adams. They may be, they may be more heavily involved in the management of the North Adams site, which is basically shutting down. The Y and the folks who own the building that the Y has been using there have run into kind of a major disagreement in who pays for the repairs to the building. So they're pulling most of their programs out of there. So if they are listed as being managers there, it's really only a name only. Their Y doesn't have any programs currently at that North Adams site.
Let me, let me ask one question for clarity here. We have a contract with the Y. If that contract is fulfilled to our satisfaction, they can do whatever they want with their employees. Am I right?
That is accurate, yeah. But also, it's just clarifying, they're not running two branches.
Right, so they're not actually running two places, but we actually just contract with them, so it's really not our call.
Yeah, I think, well, I think that initially, when we came up with the numbers, it was based on the, on the cost of hiring those employees and having them operate. Whether that is, in fact, still the case is really, you're right, Ed, it's not, it's not pertinent. We pay $144,000 a year to have the Y manage our recreation programs.
But the Y is also keeping all the money from the pool of the rec center. The public was promised the money would go to the town office. We have no idea how much that money is. The other issue is the $27,000 that the taxpayers are getting charged to subsidize memberships. It says for $29 a child. For a kid under 12, a membership is $13 in Bennington. 13 to 19 is 26. Why would we as taxpayers have to pay all these kids and give them a free membership?
No, that's, it's not, it's not a membership cost, Nancy. The subsidy goes to the children who use the Y's summer camp programs. It doesn't pay for their membership, it simply pays for the cost, a portion of the cost of operating the summer camp programs. And this year, the number of Bennington residents in those programs, I think, exceeded 90, 90 at $29 apiece. So it, and maybe it's 900 at $29. I don't remember the exact numbers. But that's what, it goes to pay for a portion of the cost of a two-week summer camp or three-week summer camp, whatever the numbers are. I don't have children in the program.
But the Y was supposed to, I know we used to do this with our own recreation department, quietly. But when the Y came in, they're going out and getting all of these grants, they said they would be subsidizing the memberships. So why should we still be paying this?
Well, they do. The Y does offer subsidy for memberships to the Y. They don't subsidize membership to the Bennington Rec Center that is a, that is separate from the Y. You can be, you can be a member of the Bennington Rec Center, and there are, there are fees for that, resident and non-resident. Or you can join the Y. And if you wanted to join the Y, but you were, had trouble on an income level, they would subsidize your membership to the Y, which gives you not only access to the Bennington Rec Center, but the Pittsfield Y and any Y anywhere in the United States. So they, they run a subsidy program of their own. We are subsidizing Bennington children to take the summer camp programs.
And what about the people with memberships that are buying memberships in North Adams? None of the money comes to Bennington. Their pool has been closed since last March. I don't know what's going on with the pool at this point. Why do we have people from that area coming to Bennington, using our town pool when none of it's coming back to our town budget?
Well, because we, we contract, we contract with the Y to operate those recreational programs. If members of the YMCA from anywhere in the United States want to come to Bennington and use our facilities, they are allowed to do so because they are a member of the Y. And we provide the building, and we maintain the building, and the Y runs the programs.
And I would be interested to know how many other towns in the country have this relation? The Y doesn't pay anything in Bennington. We're paying everything we've paid. And can you explain why we didn't have a contract from December of 2023 until, I'm sorry, 2022 until June of last year? Why did we not have a contract with the Y for six or seven months? Why wasn't there a public discussion before you signed a new contract?
Simply because the contract, the memorandum of understanding remained the same. And, and it was an oversight on both, both parties' part to update that on an annual basis. But the cost has remained the same, the understandings have remained the same. There was no reason to bring this to another public discussion as long as the major parts of the program were not changing.
Well, the public was promised that after the three years was up, there would be a discussion. We never agreed to rent Catamount, so that's an extra $36,000 a year that we're paying. And again, if the Y is selling all these memberships and getting all these grants, they should have the money to be renting Catamount.
Well, they, they do run programs there, they pay for those programs. We're renting Catamount because we are asking them to run additional programs for Bennington residents and for people at Bennington. For $144,000. Yes, we pay for the leased space, because we don't have that space available in Ben-Hi. When, when Ben-Hi becomes available, those monies will revert to Ben-Hi space. We were originally leasing the Ben-Hi space before we decided to move forward on the renovation. And we simply transferred those costs over to the other facility.
Well, the Y said they were... And one of the beautiful things is that many of the programs at Catamount turn out to be for senior programming. So it is part of that expansion of services that we are offering to seniors. And so the Y in the management agreement is charged with increasing participation and, and numbers of opportunities for youth, seniors and everyone in between. And they are doing that. And that has given us the problem of having more programs than we have space for, and therefore, we needed to find more space. And from everything I hear, it's a very good space. People are very, very happy with that space. So again, it is a management agreement. We are extremely happy with that management agreement. It has many times increased youth and senior programming number, and numbers of participants. And there's just nothing not to like about it. It saved us money, it costs us less than running the rec center ourselves, and we were not doing nearly as a good job as what the Y is doing for us. Other questions?
Sure. The town of Bennington Recreation Center, as it's been known for 50 years, was that name legally changed?
No, no. I know you're referring to the, calling it a community center. It's, it's what we call it, Nancy. It's not, the building is not named that.
But why this change for community center?
Because, because it's serving the community. Nancy, I don't, whether it's called a recreation center or a community center...
Because here's the issue, when I read your contract that you signed with the Y, they think the Y can't grant money for the towns they're working in.
I don't get your concern, Nancy, I'm sorry, I just don't understand it.
Still, we're the only ones paying them. The other towns aren't helping us. They're getting grants and they can use them in other towns.
Other towns' residents are paying a non-resident fee to take part in the programs at the Bennington Recreation Center. And it is a community center. It serves the community.
Dan, you come up. I think Dan has something to say.
I just, I think Jeannie said it, but I just want to reiterate it. The Y has not increased their management operating agreement cost to us since we started it. And we actually, so we're talking several years that they have not increased their cost to the town.
Like eight?
Eight years. It cost us less in that first year than it did to run our programs for ourselves before we went to the Y. So think about it. We've had eight years of expanding programs for youth, seniors and everybody in between for the exact same cost that we, that we started paying them eight years ago. All this other stuff, it's, just think about it. We are getting an incredible benefit at a cost that was less than we were paying for significantly less programming. So I think that's the metric we need to be looking at. The other stuff is just noise. That's the important measure.
Thank you, Dan.
And what's going to happen with the senior center? If it gets forced to the Ben-Hi, is the Y going to take it over?
So does that have anything to do with this budget? If you have a specific budget question, go ahead.
Sure, I know, I know if you look at your budget, that senior center is totally paid for by the town taxpayers and have been for 45 years. You're the one that said in 2020, 2021, it's up to us in Bennington to provide programming for all seniors in Bennington County. It absolutely is not. We're not responsible for people of any age in Bennington County. So why are we still getting charged? And we'll be the only ones paying if the senior center goes to the Ben-Hi.
Nancy, I think you're conflating two things, the cost of the building and the cost of programming. Programming, the YMCA, we have a, we have a resident and a non-resident price. And we help subsidize Bennington residents. The building itself, as you see, we're still, we're still maintaining that building, and it's going to be an empty building. And so if there's a budget question that you have, please ask it.
Sure, I have a budget question. What other towns, other than the town of Bennington, taxpayers pay, carry salary and benefit? benefits at the senior center located on the second floor of that building? Is that a budget question? We in Bennington pay, correct?
We pay hers. And we put it to the seniors several years ago, whether they wanted to charge and whether they wanted to have a resident and a non-resident cost. They did not want any charge, and they, and there was overwhelming support for inviting the broader community to be part of the senior center. And actually, and so beyond that, there's no budget question. We have that cost in our budget. If you're arguing that we should not be paying a senior director...
I'm saying you're going to tell...
That's a different question.
You're going to tell the taxpayers that a few dozen seniors decided amongst themselves who would pay the $100,000. And Stu, you had posted a notice down there around 2017 saying what non-residents were going to get charged.
Yes, and the select board did not move forward on that.
So if you were going to charge them, and that was understood.
We received a petition with more than 100 signatures on it from Bennington and non-Bennington residents opposed to any imposition of any fee scheduled to join the Bennington Senior Center. So the select board did not go forward with the fee.
So seniors who don't live in Bennington, can't vote in Bennington, signed a petition that they don't want to pay to use our town rec center.
People who were not from Bennington, who were using the facility, did not want to pay for it.
Well, I think there's a lot more than 50 or 60 seniors that are paying.
So Nancy, again, it's, you're now, you're veering into hearsay, and also it has nothing to do with the budget.
Well, I'm just very concerned. I look at what we've worked hard to pay for in this town, and everything's dragging Bennington County into it, and everybody in the county's getting a free pass.
All right, your voice is heard.
That is your opinion, opinion, not fact.
Okay, your voice is heard. Any other question, Nancy?
Well, if somebody else is paying for the town senior center...
Nancy, any other question?
Sure. Go back and check on the North Adams Y because what it said is they are open Monday through Friday. I think they said 2:00 to 8:00, and they're not open on the weekends.
It's, again, we have a management agreement with the Y. What they do in other towns is their business.
I don't understand why we're paying people to be in Bennington, and the website says that they're running North Adams.
Nancy, we're not paying them. We're paying a management agreement. They are employees of the YMCA, not of the Bennington town.
Well, all you have to do is look at the website.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Any other questions? We have any, this is our moment. Anything in the budget you have a question about? This is it. Yes, please.
Alberta Harrington, Bennington. I'm looking at proposed budget for collections. It's gone up considerably. 11.41% is the proposed budget. I'm new to this budget thing. I'm trying to learn. So I'm assuming collections means what it means.
Yes.
Taxes that are in arrears, or water and sewer bills that are in arrears.
The collections budget in the general fund, it basically covers the two individuals who work in the collections department. The major change here this year, other than the normal salary increase and any benefits cost increase, is the fact that one of our employees has come onto our, brought her, brought basically a spouse onto our program where that spouse did not, was not part of the program. So the benefits cost went up even greater because we added from a single plan to a two-person plan.
So it's the insurance, it's the health, dental and vision plan?
It's in the healthcare. Yeah, insurance, health is the major increase. It's a $12,000 increase, which is basically the majority of the increase in the budget besides salaries.
Can you tell me how lucrative, or how do they, how much do they collect in a year?
Well, the collections office handles collections of all, all fees and taxes paid to the town. So if everyone was paying, and they don't, but generally, we collect in the range of, let's say, $20 million a year.
Okay. Good. That's all I wanted to know.
Other questions? This is your, I really, really appreciate people looking at the budget this carefully. All the questions are great. Anything else? If not, then I think we are ready to adjourn this meeting, and we'll take it up again next Saturday, same time, same place.
Yes, we'll be, we'll be looking at the agencies next Saturday. Four agencies will be presenting to you, the two libraries, the rescue squad, and the Bennington County Regional Commission. And then we'll have time for any other questions on the budget that might come up.
Great, all right.
Hopefully, we'll finalize it next Saturday.
Great, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much for coming.